That wasn't even necessary.
I don't want him to do it.
I know.
Mr. Gilberto, can you get started, please?
Okay.
Okay. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Pleasure allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First order of business, we're going to do board member reports and hold the new business at the same time. Thank you, Mr. Wallman. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM, may be recorded by other local media. Now we can move on. Mr. O'Leary?
Uh, first of all, just like to acknowledge and talk about how our broken community are within untimely passing of Kurt. Kurt was recently appointed as a member of the land utilization committee here in North Reading. We're looking forward to his service, including his service at father-in-law Michael Neal. I spoke to Kurt, he was very excited about getting on the LUC and moving forward and working with the group. I think we have here with the other members of the organization. Untimely passing of death, I can heartfelt condolences to Katie and his two boys. One thing we do know is that we have a very compassionate community. They have a terrific network of friends, I'm sure are going to be very supportive over the coming years to keep the boy. Very untimely, very unfortunate. The community is at a loss for not having the services and certainly all of the families are in terrible loss. Just wanted to acknowledge.
Steve, I'm getting a message that you can't be heard.
I can't be heard.
So maybe just pull your mic closer, I guess. Try that.
This is on, everything's on. This is from NORCAM, so this should be, yeah.
But again, I just want to acknowledge the task of Kurt and also refer people to McDonald Funeral Home in Wakefield and the obituary as a rule of flowers, giving a contribution towards the boy's future and I would encourage him to do so.
Thank you.
Additionally, I'd like to acknowledge that I was able to be present a few weeks ago with Mrs. Gonzalez and Mr. Massey for the reception commemorating the service of Pat and Frank Romeo at the Damon Tavern. It was a wonderful fan put together by Pat and Frank's family, members of the historical Anticranes Society and other people who donated so much time and effort and energy to bring that little enclave of our community together and see it grow. Did a wonderful job of commemorating their service and recruiting new members. And it was just a pleasure to be there to reminisce with everybody of this lengthy service that both Pat and Frank had given to the town. It was a great afternoon and they did a terrific job. Board of Health, a couple of big things going on here that you should be made aware of. This Thursday evening, Amy Luckowitz, who was our Drug-Free Communities Director, will be making a presentation to the Board of Health regarding Drug-Free Communities Director regarding the Tobacco-Free Generation Initiative. Just making a presentation to the Board of Health for their consideration because Board Health can implement these types of regulations. And then there'll be a follow-up meeting in September with the towns consultant regarding the effort and where the state is in this particular matter. So if anybody has any interest in it, they'll be on Zoom Thursday evening. And Amy will be making her presentation. I know that there's been discussions at the CIT regarding the initiative and it'd be interesting to hear what she has to offer and to suggest. Some communities have already undertaken it. Bottom line is that the initiative would basically restrict the sale of nicotine products to any individuals who were born after a certain date. As opposed to 18 or 21, it's after a certain date. And the idea of that is to basically do away with the use of the nicotine moving forward. So it's a timely discussion, something that's taking place in other communities. And Board of Health will be listening to Amy's presentation on Thursday. Additionally, the Board of Health has been very active this summer with a Department of Public Health intern that they had for several weeks. If you recall last fall, it was an initiative by the recycling and now the Sustainability Committee to have recycled, talking about recycled products, what's going to be used for takeout meals, so the sustainable food and packaging initiative that was put forth. And again, we passed it over last year with the caveat that the Board of Health would do additional education and outreach. They have, through the intern and through Mr. Bracy's efforts, reached out to every business establishment that serves food and has packaging products. Met with them, sat down with them, educated them. And they're also going to be having a brief discussion Thursday evening regarding that, as to how that initiative and undertaking has gone from the intern and from Mr. Bracy. And there'll be further communication and input from the public before the Board of Health takes on any other considerations as to what's, any initiative they're thinking about. What they're talking about is potentially putting some restrictions in place, potentially effective for the first of the year with an ability of any establishment that has stock in hand to use it up over a six-month time period. It appears as though, based upon what I was told, that a couple of establishments have already switched. It didn't appear to be significant. A lot of these establishments already know that this is coming. There's a lot of discussion in other communities. So the feedback has been informative and the educational process as was committed to is taking place. And input from the establishments and from the public is being sought. So I want to acknowledge and congratulate them for their work so far. And stay tuned, we'll keep you informed as to how it's progressing. Just in relation to the state action on the housing bill that implemented ADUs. Obviously, it's going to have an impact on this community. I just want to ask, should we be reserving a space in the war for October? For any changes that the planning commission may be suggesting? That the law may allow for certain local controls? Again, while they may be minor, we still have the opportunity to make some local initiatives on this. This basically goes into effect February of 2025. So that our opportunity to act on it is really October. We already have draft ADU regulations which were not put forth and voted on. So maybe the planning commission, I haven't heard that they have or are looking to offer any suggestions, but I would hope that they would be. And I would, since they didn't really meet with us previously, maybe they want to meet with us now to offer us their insight as to what they would be proposing for local restrictions as allowed under the new law. Because again, it's going to be implemented anyway. It's already in effect, but it takes effect February.
I think it's.
And until February comes, the local bylaws are still in effect. So this is the transitional period where if anybody's applying for an ADU, it comes under our current bylaws. But as of February, it, the new law takes effect. And if the town hasn't taken any action before that, it's just a new law.
Well, maybe we can discuss the placeholder when we get to that. And then also, if Mrs. Gonzalez, if you don't mind, is liaison to maybe get the answer to the question that Mr. O'Leary just gave.
Yeah, I just, you know, to me, I think time is of the essence. There is, it's pretty limited as to what the communities can do. But if there's something that we think we should be implementing, then it should be put forth with consideration and implemented from October so that when the law goes into effect, any local regulations that we are allowed to put in can take effect.
Okay. I'll have a conversation with them.
Yeah, that would be good. The other thing I'd just like to discuss a little bit, again, MBTA Communities Act. The, I just wanted to acknowledge that Representative Jones did offer an amendment, which was not successful. But an amendment to the process suggesting that an appeals process be put forward. I just want to acknowledge it and thank her for doing that, even though it wasn't successful. His amendment would have allowed for local communities to appeal on a basis of three categories. One being unable to provide enough water or wastewater treatment. The other being the inability to handle the transportation aspects of the growing population as a result of the housing development. And adverse environmental impacts and any impacts on historical properties. So I just want to thank him for acknowledging that it has passed and it needs some tweaking. And these are major areas of concern that he was trying to address, well, not successful. Again, I just wanted to acknowledge his efforts to do so. Additionally, at that same time, he was also looking for he offered an amendment to the 40B regulation, which would allow for communities to include mobile homes as affordable units because right now under the 40B law, which has been in effect for decades, mobile homes are not counted towards it. Again, it was unsuccessful, but again, timely. In relation to the ADU, the current law is obviously going to need a lot of tweaking because ADUs, again, a lot of them are targeted towards some lower-income people who can stay, you know, help them stay in their home. Also are disabled people staying in the area. There's no affordable aspect to the ADU law at this particular time. So I think he'll be offering amendments to that moving forward, but acknowledging that it is the law and we need to comply. Also in relation to the MBTA communities, I've been getting some calls and correspondence from people over at Martin's Landing. They have been receiving through the Facebook page information regarding our upcoming October town meeting. And I think it's wonderful that people are reaching out and trying to engage, get people engaged to come and participate in town meeting. What's a bit distressing is that some of the information that's being provided to them is patently false and untrue. And I think it's important that the people over there understand that what someone tells them that the act passes the state, the town can come in here and nullify the 55 and older requirement, which means anyone can buy here, is patently and totally false. That is untrue. When they're told the state wants additional units, if the state wants, if the town wants to require
We're not going to debate.
If the town wants to require additional units to be built in North Reading, can decide to build more units at Martin's Landing, patently false and untrue. So I think it's important, again, while I want to see people engaged and mobilized, I want to be sure that they have accurate information to make an informed decision. I'm not concerned about whether the people come and support the article or not. What I get concerned about is the false information being put out here and alarming people unnecessarily.
It's not false.
So it is totally false. So that being said, I think it's important for them to reach out to reliable and informed sources to get accurate information. So I just want to make sure that people at Martin's Landing, and again, some people have reached out to me and asked if this was true, and it's not. And some of the other things that are being put out on the Facebook page and stated amongst themselves in conversations are just unfortunately not true. So I would just hope that the person who is putting this information out
It's an attorney.
Is doing it accurately and informed and not doing it with false priestesses of giving people false information. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you. That's it? That's it?
Okay. Mr. Wallman?
Um, just to comment on that, I think it'd be good, on a lot of projects we do, we do FAQs. I think we ought to have town council review the FAQs and weigh in on it because that's who we listen to. The town council knows what these issues are and should be the last word on the legality of the things that people are bringing up. So let's plan to very quickly come up with FAQs, anything that we're hearing that is, you know, potentially bad information, let's vet it out, let's get town council to weigh in and let's create an MBTA notice on our website.
Wait, wait, we're going to stop, timeout. You can make a comment, it's not an agenda item, we're not deliberating it, so.
I'm making a comment.
So you can make a comment later as well.
Something to be discussed, old new business to be brought up.
I'm making a suggestion that we do FAQs.
Okay.
We do every project and it's just practical and it's a good way to get the right word out and not and not go down rabbit holes that don't exist. On the accessory, just to be very clear for everybody, and thanks for bringing it up, Mr. O'Leary. The accessory dwelling unit initiative has been on the select board agenda for years now. And we've been trying to get it done and unfortunately couldn't get it done internally, but I'm delighted the state took it on. And people should understand that accessory dwelling unit policies is really important for our seniors to stay in town because they're overhoused. And without this type of option, they're going to be leaving. And I have someone who's always in my ear, knew every time I go to a public meeting, someone's in my ear telling me I have to leave town because I can't afford to be here. Hopefully, this provides some sort of buffer for them so they don't have to leave and they can stay in our town. So I'm looking forward to the CPC bringing forward some information about how it can work better for our town within the guidelines that they offer, but it's very, very important that we do this and that we embrace it. The senior prom is the second annual real senior prom, which is hosted by the Council of Aging. Senior Center is on September 18th at four o'clock. The previous year it was very popular, a lot of people came to it, they're doing it again. To reserve, just call the senior center at 978-664-5600. And appropriately, they're offering transportation for people who need it, with transportation services we already have. So hopefully people will go. And it's intended for people, I think, 60 and over, although it doesn't have a ceiling here. So I guess anybody can come.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Wallman.
Mr. Massey?
Yes. I took a tour of all the schools with Mr. O'Leary and a couple of school committee members, Mr. Daley. Met some of the principals. It was an awesome tour, I just wanted to thank the offering schools for allowing us to tour all five schools, all five schools, all four buildings. It was very productive and I'm thankful for his, him and his staff's time. I've toured some other buildings throughout town. Since being elected, I've toured the police station, the fire station, senior center, DPW and the water department, town hall, Daniel Everett apartment, those buildings. I've still got some others, but the reason for these tours is one, to create relationships with a lot of the people and employees who work in these buildings. And these have been very productive, were actually incredibly likely for the people that we have that work for our town and for our schools. Second reason was, you know, more leaning towards capital improvement where being able to understand the conditions of the buildings firsthand will be beneficial when these projects come across our table, that we can be able to accurately speak to them and we're educated on the issues that we're seeing. I specifically wanted to thank our DPW, Parks and Rec and school custodians, our school facilities, led by Sonny Confagna. They truly keep our schools in great shape and to the DPW and Parks and Rec, they truly do a great job at what they do. So what I also want to say, I learned a lot from learning about the Friendso groups that helped these schools. And what they do with the hood school and that playground was truly amazing and to see that level of volunteerism is admired. Keeping on the subject, as far as town infrastructure, thinking a lot about how we can help our infrastructure and our bones, specifically Route 28. I know there were some studies in the past of Route 28, but thoughts on how to really beautify it? I think you drive down our stretch of Route 28 compared to Andover, Reading's stretch of Route 28, and they're very difficult. And I think we have the potential to really beautify that spot. And I look forward to getting some great conversations with you folks, but.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Massey.
Yeah, so the commemoration for Pat and Frank Romeo was, as Mr. O'Leary said, just just a great event. Pat sat on many, many boards throughout her time here. She's very missed. She was definitely a mentor for me, so it was a, it was a great night. And I learned a lot. I learned a lot, it was a history lesson. National Night Out was last Tuesday, put on by the Community Impact Team, the police and the fire. It was an amazing turnout, biggest turnout I've seen. It was a fantastic night, yes, Pat, Rita, you were there. The line, I was going to get a burger on my way home and that didn't happen because the line was.
The line went around the park all of a sudden.
But that's a great thing. It was a great free night for all. Lots of families, lots of kids having a great time. It was, it was really a nice thing to see. Purple Heart Ceremony. Did we ever do that? No, we didn't do that, right? We haven't, we haven't been together since then, okay. Lost track of time. That was August 7th. Purple Heart Ceremony that we have up on the hill. Beautiful, beautiful night, well-attended, families of Purple Heart recipients. We even have a Purple Heart recipient sitting with us. Mr. Studo, the TA, Mr. Massey and myself all participated and spoke. Just such an honor, always an honor to do that. And we're so proud that we have become a Purple Heart community. So we will celebrate that every August 7th. And just a note on the MBTA information. I just want to say that there was a great informational night that was held at Kitty's a few months back. Well-attended with some very highly informed people, including attorney Mike Walsh and some other very informative speakers who, you know, it would have been, maybe we should do it again so you guys can come attend and hear what they have to say.
I did watch.
Okay, well, then you should know that that's not.
No, I, no, I know, I know.
False, okay. We won't debate it here, we'll debate it another time. So that's all for my board member reports, but I do have a response to a couple meetings, the last full meeting. In July, a conversation was had by this board that was brought up by me. The conversation was about whether the gazebo at Ipswich River Park in the afternoon on a weekend was the appropriate place for drag queens to dance during the pride celebration, period. Nobody spoke against the pride celebration, nobody spoke against drag queens, nobody degraded, shamed or attacked anyone. We simply had a conversation of whether it was the appropriate place for what I personally, my own opinion, is adult entertainment. This is what this board is elected to do. We are voted in by our peers to represent them and their ideas and values. And those ideas and values can be different across this board. So conversations are important to have, exchange of ideas are important to have. I feel the need to defend myself and this board because a group of residents came here following that meeting acting as if we had attacked and denigrated drag queens, and that simply didn't happen. I encourage people to come here and speak at public comment. It is your right, a privilege, and often it gives us food for thought. But please don't come here with a mob mentality trying to belittle or shame any member of this board publicly. We all work very hard, giving our time and our energy with one goal, to continue to keep our town of North Reading a safe, happy, peaceful, prosperous community.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. I want to piggyback against the subject, I wish I didn't have to. So Mr. Curtis Burton was a friend. I've known him for a couple of years since I moved here. Mr. Gilberto's known him a lot longer, our kids go to school together. It was he introduced me to a lot of people coming out of COVID. I didn't know a lot of people. I moved here in January 2018 and then a year goes by and then we're all stuck at home for 18 months. And, you know, it was something where he made an effort at the side of a flag football game and introduced me to a lot of people that I know now that I'm closer to. Untimely is one word, not fair is another. I mean, the man was resourceful and you can tell the way people speak about someone, even if you only know them for a couple of years, to understand what he did and what he meant. So I'd like to take a moment of silence. If you can stand, please do, in honor of the late Curtis Burton. Thank you. Mr. Gilberto, we can, we can move on to public comment. If any. Ms. Fillmore?
Yes.
Please. If you can just state your name for an address, please, I know what.
If I'm having a senior moment, do I have to? No. My name is Patricia Fillmore, 24 Field Press, Harris, North Reading. And I just want to briefly touch upon the July 18th town select board meeting where there was no public comment allowed, which I can understand. But Mr. Massey was pretty much thrown under the bus for speaking about a question that I asked him and several other members of this board about the ethics ruling of a committee person being assigned as a committee person on several other big money committees. Okay, nobody seemed to answer that, but Mr. Massey put himself under the bus when he got up and asked on my behalf at town meeting. But what I saw on the 18th was
24th.
Was it 24th? I'm sorry, I was looking at the meetings over the 24th, thank you, at the bullies. You know, I worked with little kids for a very long time and kids that they're not playing the way they want them to play, they'll look at the new kid on the block and say, you can't play because you're not following my rules. And that's pretty much what was going on. And mom and dad stepped in, Mr. Studo and Mrs. Gonzalez, and said, wait a minute, he's the new kid on the block, give him a break. And then the two bullies, and I'm sorry to say this, Stephen, but you were a bully the other night. And I had voted for you several, many times. The two bullies stepped in and said, well, I'm not going to let him play because I don't get an apology. Did he owe you an apology? He did something that he thought was right as a private citizen, not as a select board member, but a private citizen. Unfortunately, he took off his select board hat and came to the public side. Was it wrong? Probably wrong place, not wrong, but the wrong place. And I think it was a disgrace and I'm totally embarrassed to say that I voted for him. And I think it was a disgrace, and I'm totally embarrassed to say that I voted for you at this point, the way you behaved, because that was bully tactics. And those, Mr. Wallner, as you know, have happened before with youth services. So you know that, but you can explain that to people if you want. But I just want to say I'm embarrassed. I'm glad you both stepped up to the bat and said, "He's new kid. Give him a chance." But what was done that night was a disgrace. Thank you.
Mr. Mackey.
Kevin Mackey, 80 Adams Street. In regards actually to the last select board meeting, it's obviously public comment is not a back-and-forth, but it did seem that Ms. Gonzalez was being... It was there, all the comments were directed towards her. Is there a way, so I have three minutes about, is there a way to pass on my time to a select board member for any reason? That's my question.
Okay. I'm gonna briefly answer that and move on. Public comment is for the public to make a statement or comment. And then if there's a dialogue that needs to be had with a select board member, that could happen in another avenue or a public hearing. Anyone online?
Good question. As far as public comment goes, does the board have the option to either not respond or can we have the option to respond?
Because I didn't get to respond.
The chair can decide. But typically, no, it's public comment, because then, the way I've always seen it, and I'll explain it very quickly, just especially when I saw it during Seward, it's not fair for those that do not anticipate to be able to have a dialogue with a select board member to then see that someone else got to. So that's why I want to keep it leveled and be fair with everyone in the community.
Just, Mr. Chip, just in relation to public comment, what the practice has been, it was instituted a few, a couple decades, it took a couple decades ago, because before we never had. We thought it was a good idea. The whole purpose was to allow people to bring forward their questions, comments, observations to the board publicly. The board would not necessarily engage in a debate or discussion about it, but if there was something that was worthy of an agenda item at a future meeting, we would then put it on the agenda for further discussion. So it's an opportunity for the public to bring some ideas forward, or comments, forward to the board for consideration, potentially for another future agenda item, rather than engaging and keeping the discussion going. So it's very limited. Come, state your piece, what your concerns are, what you have to say, and if it's worthy of it, the majority of the board considers it, and the chair, who sets the agenda, determines that it's worthy of an agenda item, a future date, can assist putting it on. That's why there's no real back-and-forth.
No way about it. Okay. So no one online?
No.
Okay, Miss, we have one. Ms. Muller.
I just want to take the, I appreciate all of you bringing that up about...
Name an address.
Can you ask?
Name an address.
Oh, so sorry.
No, that's fine.
Rita Muller, 29 Abbott Road, North Reading, Mass.
Thank you.
Just in case there's somebody out there.
I apologize. I'm the chairman of LUC, and I just want to thank you gentlemen for bringing up about Curtis and obviously my condolences to those of you that you are extremely loved. And I just kind of want to, I'm glad you took the moment of silence, to let everybody know that if there's anything that we can bring, I think, in Curtis's name, because he would have been around for an extremely long time working in this town, and he already made a massive impact in the community. But in his own words, the day after the, one of the town meetings we had, the first thing on my desk when I woke up in the morning was getting a letter of a citizen activity form that came from Jen in town to say, "What a wonderful addition." And Curtis wrote a letter to us saying that he was volunteering because of some experience that he had, real estate, project management, contract fulfillment, budget management, and if I could help in any way. He has the best interest in the LUC because he married into, you know, Katie O'Neill and that family. And when you think of it, someone that had that much respect for his father-in-law with all the years that he had worked on LUC, when LUC did an immense amount of work, he wanted to join to preserve the open spaces, woods, complexes, conservation, walking, hiking, make his family proud, which God knows he's done that, and give his work. He was inspired and to think that we have so much negative thing that goes on in this world, in this town, on different things, back and forth, that everybody, some people see black, some see white, and there's no middle. And when Curtis came, that application that morning, I cried when I saw it, to think that somebody like Curtis wanted to be on that committee, and we knew he was gonna make a difference. And he wanted to join because he looked at North Reading as all the positive that he can look at, that he took the fantastic mix of developed and undeveloped land and wanted to work on it, which most of us run away from it because we can't do that. And he came forward, and God knows what he has done for the town, and that he still took more time than he was gonna be on this committee. As our children grew up in North Reading, I want to ensure that they have the opportunity to live in a place with smart and sustainable decisions that light a positive change in the community. So I'm asking every other volunteer in Curtis's name, for him, for his family, that when they do join, I don't care what board it is in town, what they volunteer to do, he exemplifies what you people have done, that you've worked hours and hours and hours, and you get beat up, and people in the North Reading give their opinions on things, and sometimes we want to hear it, sometimes we don't. You listen, and thank God for the citizens that speak up, whether we want to hear it or not. But in Curtis's name, I want to thank him for everything he's done. And if there are any people in North Reading that have a little bit of time like Curtis was gonna have, that wanted to decide to make a big difference and a positive change for the community, and he was inspired by the work that a lot of committees have done in town, and he thinks he can contribute in a collaborative and professional manner, and that's why he was gonna join. And for him and his family, I thank those of you that do him, what a hard time it's been for you, and those rest of the family, so thank you. In his name, hopefully you'll have a lot more people that will volunteer now to try to fill some of his shoes that he was gonna volunteer and work on. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita.
Anyone else? Number one, Sir Gilberto.
Certainly. Now, next agenda item is to receive a presentation from a candidate for the rank of Eagle Scout in Boy Scouts. Liam, I'm asking you to take a seat actually in front of the microphone there rather than the laptop, and I'll deal with that. I'll give you some very brief introduction. So Liam is going into his freshman year at a very nice school and is a Life Scout. Normally, you have Boy Scouts who are in front of you here because they have attained the rank of Eagle Scout. Liam is working towards a rank right now, and his project, as you saw in the meeting panel, is to put together an oral history of veterans, specifically veterans here from North Reading. And part of his project is a presentation this evening, probably taking all of his thunder at the very beginning. So, but I do want to point out for the board, and we all know the reasons that scouting and Eagle Scouts are close to my heart, but you are actually an active part of the service project here, and the community as a whole will get that opportunity a week from Thursday night as well. So I'm gonna turn it over to Liam. He's joined by his parents, Beth and TJ, are seated behind him in the front row there. I'll turn it over to you, Liam, and I will get that going.
Hello, Chairman Studo, Mr. Gilberto, and members of the select board and residents of North Reading. Thank you for allowing me to address you as I near completion of my Eagle Scout project. My name is Liam Steele. I'm a Life Scout in Troop 750, and I'm here to share with you the bridge version of my Eagle Scout project that I made for tonight. This version includes three of the 14 veterans that are profiled, so that you can get a feel for my project. The full version is about 45 minutes, and it will be presented next Thursday at the Flum Memorial Library, and I hope to see most of the community there.
Thank you.
I'm a little rusty.
I know. It's been a little while since we've had to have to do that.
Is Matt still here? Yep. I don't think we're sharing up to Zoom, because I see the camera's still showing.
Thank God, Matt.
My name is Liam Steele. I'm a Life Scout in North Reading's Boy Scout Troop 750. This presentation is about my Eagle Scout project, which was about preserving oral history. My project consisted of interviewing the United States military personnel, which is current members and veterans of their time in the service of their country. With this information that I revived from them, I created a historical book, an informational video, and posters that will be displayed at the Flum Memorial Library. I chose to include this as my Eagle Scout project because of the visit with my great uncle was being on warbed. He sent a clan shack in Western Mass, and he shared stories of his time in the service, which intrigued me. I got in my car to head east towards my home, and reflected on the first standing couch of stories that would be lost forever from our project correctly. This clan didn't quickly snowball into the project that I've shared with you today. Before written language existed, family history was passed down from one generation to the next through storage album. Sit back, relax, and enjoy the stories of 14 United States military service members in the army. What is oral history? Oral history is a technique for generating and preserving original, historically interesting information, prior source material, and personal recollections through planned recorded interviews. This method of interviewing is used to preserve the voices, memories, and perspectives of people in history. It's a tool we can all use to engage with and learn from family members, friends, and the people we share space with in an interview that captures the unique history and perspective of their elders.
So it started out with Lord Bane Hough, and it was originally cast as the Wolf of War, and going to be the Silver Wolf, which was going to be the Heist. But then, when BSA formed, they decided that a wolf, they do not have to be the top award, and they should be a Marigold, because that is a Marigold. So it's always interesting to me, they've always had 21 merit badges. Originally, the eagle was another merit badge that you would get, so you'd have to have first class, and then five more merit badges would pick you up, and five would get you star. And then, once you have 21, your scout will be the scout at that point in time. During the whole time, you're only really required to be of service to your school or church or synagogue, but then eventually, in 1965, they came back and did a whole revision. And there, and then that 1965 revision became opposite, that you had to have a whole project, and it could not be from the approved list. And it had to be, the scout had to plan, develop, and correct it on the road. So what that really means is that there was an approved list of projects before. In order to get Life and then Star, you had to take a project from the approved list from the merit council to then work on it. Part of that 1965 revision, they went and switched the order of Life and Star, because they put the star as a five-point star for the five merit badges. So that's really kind of the history of the Eagle Scout and the Eagle Scout project. It's, there'll be a few more iterations. One interesting note, there are originally five required merit badges, and of those five original required, only two of them are still required. First day, and that's it.
All right. Thank you. Can you tell me why Eagle is such an honor?
It's an honor because the Eagle Scout is supposed to embody the principles of scout law, and trustworthy love, hopefully, and that's what everyone thinks of. And also, it means that you should now be comfortable in the outdoors, that you should be comfortable in camping. And hopefully, in going through all of these things, we have made you uncomfortable in applying these situations. How do you think you think? How do you fly a scout? How do you go to doing? Well, now, going through all of these things, we hope that you are learning to be uncomfortable. And in that, you're seeking out the uncomfortable situation, where you don't necessarily know all of the variables, but you realize, "I can get in there, and I have the skills to figure it out once I get there, and I can solve the problem, and I can help others as I go." Because others have helped you, taught you, it's now your chance to teach others and help them. So that's kind of what I think is the big honor of Eagle Scout, it shows that you're independent, that you can organize the things together, you're honest and trustworthy, and the rest of us can follow.
Great. Does your family have any personal history with the military?
My father was in the Navy, and my father-in-law was also coming up in the Navy at the same time, but I think that was a family. I could trace my ancestors back to Navy leather, and so therefore, we had relatives that were in the Revolution and all the different wars, and Civil War and everything else.
Oral history is important because it keeps culture, history, tradition, and stories from past generations, and it allows newer generations to see and experience the life they lived back when their grandfather was alive, these stories that they did tell.
It wasn't until I was getting ready to come home that I realized, you know, what the situation was like. And it was, it was, I don't know, I, I, what I did is I took a European out, they call a European out, in other words, I left the service in Berlin. And I flew out about a week later, and I just threw all my military stuff away, dressed in my civilian, got a little suitcase so I looked like I was a college student. That's how I flew home to get through the airports, because it could get pretty ugly, a soldier in uniform walking through an airport back in, you know, '69, '70, '71. And then, I just, I, this is the first I sat down and probably talked about the military because you just didn't do it. You came home, you went back to work, and you didn't say nothing about it.
Where did you go after I ran?
So I was engineing, I ran. So on June 3rd, we were coming back, I had a meeting with the chief, one of the chiefs in my neighborhood, we were building a project with him. And on the way back, we had to go through Alba Gray Market, which was overseen and patrolled by the Iraqi army. It wasn't one of our sectors, but it was the way back to our base. So we had, that's the most dangerous part of our mission typically. We had a very good relationship in our area. That area, you know, we just passed through, and we didn't know any of the locals. It was a Sunni area, and the Iraqi army was mainly Shia, so there was a lot of tension in that area, at least. And I was second vehicle out of four, and it was, it's called a closed wire IED, so it's kind of like a garden hose way across the road. And my Humvee rolled across it, it closed the circuit, which shut off the IED. It still went off on our rear, our rear wheel, so I was patrol leader, I was a two-leader, so I'm in the, as you would say, shotgun, the driver, I had my gunner up top, my interpreter was behind me. And unfortunately, where it hit in the rear axle, right above that is actually the gas tank is. So it was kind of a double explosion. I got out of the vehicle immediately. I was on fire, so thankfully, stop, stop, drop, and roll, like a learning kindergarten in the bachelor school, gave me, you know, gave me the good use for me. My interpreter unfortunately did not stop, drop, and roll, he was walking around on fire, and it was an ambush. So we're getting shot at at the same time. Fortunately, you know, the platoon, they're very well-trained by the people that were responsible for them before I got there. They went to where they're supposed to, right, you know, 360-degree security, they returned fire, and I was quickly escorted out of there. So within an hour, you know, they had our QR app came out, Quick Reaction Force, they're on base, they're always ready to come out in case something happens. So they came out and they got me. Unfortunately, my gun, I started to a lot, never made it out of the heat castle that night. My interpreter and I were taken back to the, to the, to the Bay State Station, and then we were flown to the Green Zone, which is probably 10 miles away at most. That's where the big hospital is. That's where the big hospital is. So the morning, you know, they filled some lot of drugs. So I can't give you a play-by-play, but, you know, they saved me. But my interpreter didn't make it. He had too many burns there internal for him. So the morning, so that happened on Saturday night going into Sunday morning. So then Sunday, I was there for a little while and then I flew out to a larger logistical base and they flew me to Germany, I believe Sunday night, Monday morning. And I was there for less than a day and they flew me to Brooke Army Medical Center, which was outside San Antonio in Texas. I want to say I got there Tuesday night. So that's, that's how I lived Iraq, not how I wanted. Sorry, very blessed to have been at home.
I love the World War II generation. My grandmother grew up in Italy during World War II, so I was like always really interested in that. And I thought it was so cool how like that generation jumps out of a plane into like a foreign country to like help other people. And I have a really big sense of adventure and I love history, so I was like, that'd be pretty cool. And to me, like you learn how to jump out of a plane, but you learn something really cool about yourself every time you jump out of a plane because it's scary, it takes a lot of courage. And I don't know, it like helps you overcome a lot of things in life and then everything else in your life becomes really easy when you have to jump out of a plane, so.
I hope you enjoyed our presentation today. There are heroes in your community with very real stories just waiting to be shared. I hope this project inspires you to seek the stories living in your community.
Thank you, everyone, and I hope to see some of you at the library on Thursday night, next Thursday.
Thanks, John Ray.
Thank you, man. Some members of the dad in there?
No, other than Amostra. Congratulations. This is a tremendous undertaking and project that you're taking on. And as you said, this is an oral history that's going to be available for generations to come. You know, what people sometimes forget is that, you know, those veterans are the boy or the girl that grew up next door. You know, some of them volunteered and in my day and age, they didn't all volunteer. Sometimes it was a draft. They were drafted, but it's, you know, they were just kids from the neighborhood who are now being called upon to go out and protect our life and liberty. And what you're doing here is fantastic and greatly appreciated for sure. And can't wait to see the rest of it. But thank you very much.
Great job. How did you find or how did you identify who you wanted to talk to?
So I reached out to Susan Magner back when she was working for the Veterans Department and she helped contact some of the veterans and some of my mom's friends reached out to her and have some of the local measures.
You must have become quite enlightened by hearing the stories.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing it. Ms. Gonzalez?
Just, I'm so moved by that. The veterans are near and dear to my heart. You know, I think we had a conversation about this when you were getting started. And I mean, I can't even believe what an unbelievable job. I unfortunately work on Thursday night, so I won't be able to see the whole thing. And no one wants to want to cancel on my client. Steve Pepper, I mean, what they went through to be ashamed to walk through the airport, it just wanted to make me cry, you know? I think the only thing you were missing was popcorn. Really, I mean, I don't watch a lot of TV or movies, but I mean, that was intriguing to me and I commend you because there's stories that need to be heard. Your generation, I mean, you haven't seen it and felt it the way others have. I think it's important to not forget, you know, why we're here and why we're free and the people who put their lives on the line. So thank you so much. It's an important project and I really appreciate you doing it.
Yeah, Liam, just want to echo what they said. Nice to see your, your work tonight. You did an excellent job. So you should be, you should be very proud and all for a very good cause. So appreciate what you're doing. It's very nice to see you.
Liam, I've said in the past that, to echo Mrs. Gonzalez's comment that when you grow up in relative peacetime, and that also includes, you know, my generation, I'm old forty-one, let's call it that, that you forget sometimes, and we mentioned it, especially when we get around, you know, Veterans Day and we talk about it. So I think that hearing these stories makes it real because that's what it is. It's about, you know, sometimes you just, you know, you read something from a hundred years ago, but it's somebody who's not here. It's like a story about them in a book where here it's actually, no, this, I did this. It wasn't, you know, that gentleman, Mr. Boss, I believe, was that? Yeah, that wasn't a, you know, I read a, you know, like I'm going to read in the transcript maybe a little summarized, but it was actually hearing it that this actually happened and this happens. So I think that's, that's what we need in a time where unfortunately the attention span of everyone is very short. This makes you stop and be like, okay, this is something important I should listen to. So thank you for that. So, and congratulations again.
Mr. Roberto?
Mr. Chairman, just brief reminders for folks watching, next Thursday night, August twenty-ninth at seven PM at the Memorial Library in the Activity Room. Right, there'll be another show, we have a full length, approximately forty-minute presentation on the event. Thank you for putting that together. Congratulations on your efforts so far. We know you're not done. I look forward to seeing you back here once you become the Eagle Scout later in the year and reach out to me if you want. Thank you. Great work.
Hopefully you can get posted on Merica as well. I think that'd be appropriate venue for them as well, so.
Yeah, so when I was creating the videos, I partnered with Morecambe and I helped, they helped me a lot, so they will be posting YouTube videos.
Great. Perfect. For those who can see. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you don't mind, if I could just suggest that perhaps we take item nine out of order only because we have the constable here. I believe I saw him in the areas in the back.
Yeah, you said.
Yeah, we know that Tom Clerk is already on. We apologize to Mr. McKnight, the window was also on virtually, but just because we're still out there in person, it'd be great if we could take just a quick overview of the state primary elections upcoming and then the required votes. Because of security features, it's going to take me a minute to just allow Susan to stay here. All right, Susan, you're now a co-host. You should be able to turn on your video. Oh, there you are. And you should be able to unmute yourself.
Can hear me?
Can hear you, yes. And can I just fix the presentation?
Good job. You're hired.
I'm hired. Again.
You get paid the same rate as I.
Yes.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Of course, I think the gathering, the next election for us is the state primaries, number three, that has all your state reps on the ballot. You will see it on the town website calendar or the town and/or the town clerk's website page, all the election information is posted in both places. I've got, as usual, a Q and A, which has all kinds of links that you can click on, which gives information. You can do the ballot. You can check in-person early voting schedule that I will do in a second, voter registration. But the first thing is we have a voter registration deadline coming up. It is just Saturday, August twenty-fourth. We are mandated by law to vote by nine o'clock, which is also the beginning of in-person early voting. We are mandated to do it on a Saturday or a Sunday. So that will begin Saturday. The in-person voting will go through all next week, through next Friday, August period, which will end at one o'clock. We are open as usual two nights for those who are not coming anywhere in the way. Tuesday, Thursday night for eight o'clock at night. So on the board registration deadline too, this is a primary. So the deadline, name or address, your name, your party affiliation, anything, if you register to vote, anything to do with the voter registration. And I always say, please do it sooner rather than later. You can go on to Secretary Yellen's website page, you can call the town clerk's office, you can come in anyway, which is convenient for you. Check your voter registration sooner rather than later. There's a, there's a deadline to apply for mail-in ballot, whether it's an early mail-in ballot or an absentee ballot. It's five business days before the election, before Labor Day, it's a holiday the day before, it goes to the Monday, August twenty-sixth by five o'clock. There's a deadline to apply for mail-in ballot. Secretary Yellen nailed down the post pads again, second round of post pads. To anybody who would not receive a post pad first time in January, there will be another set of post pads going out by Secretary Yellen after the September four primary. In-person early voting, already mentioned, it's in the gymnasium. The gymnasium has been all been already public, so we are back in the gymnasium, going voting. If you click on the town website calendar, it has all the in-person voting schedules and times. You can also come in a town hall and pick up a copy to take home. The other thing too is on my campaign, contract ballot, you can also check your voter registration. And another thing too is absentee voting. It's always the day before the election by noon time. You know, that's the only excuse about absentee voting, although you can't make the whole new election day or what have you. But because the day before the election, Labor Day, it reverses back to Friday before the election, which is five o'clock for Friday. There's a deadline to vote absentee or wait until. I think that's pretty much it. Before you have the September, the primary warrant, which you are required to sign. And I think that's pretty much it. And like I said, the Q and A, I posed, you should go and check all the links, find all the information that you should take, you direct to Secretary Yellen's website to check on your voter registration, contract ballot, post type events. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there should be two motions before you. One is for the appointment of election workers, where we are recommending the board elect to exercise option number two. And then following the vote on that motion is a motion to assign the state. I wrote preliminary election, but I believe it's actually called a primary election or I'll look to Mr. O'Leary. I think it normally was called preliminary election. I thought that's what it was.
We gotta wait one moment. Mr. Massey had a pretty big coffee.
Can I, can I get the motion?
Well, I want to be able to vote.
Voice back up?
Yes.
Mari wants to see what she's reading.
Thank you.
Oh, she's got fun.
Welcome back, by the way. It's nice to have you back in the corner.
Thank you. It's nice to be here.
We got the big one after this.
Yeah. Why do we see the worst town of all? Those coffees, just the poor.
You'll see before the present election as well. He's saying.
Mr. Chairman, I move to exercise the following option for appointment of election workers for elections held between September one, twenty twenty-four through August thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Option two, appoint election officers from the list submitted by the registrars as recommended by the registrars.
Second? Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to vote to sign the state preliminary election warrant.
Second? Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, madam.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the constabulary, so we'll sign off or take the, if work was assigned, so the board can decide, you know, that would be tremendous. And we took an item out of order, we want to get back to item number eight, Seventh St. Teresa Street. Mrs. McKnight, the constable, has joined us virtually. I have her also asking to reach out as a co-host, but hopefully she can turn her video on now.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Are you going to, did O'Leary really need to share your screen at all or?
No, no, I was just going to give a summary, if that's okay. Okay, thank you. So Seventh St. Teresa Street is one of the twenty-three properties that we have in our affordable housing overlay district that was placed in that zoning district in two thousand and eight. The town owns each of these properties, but as of yet, none of them have been developed. The town meeting previously voted to authorize the select board to dispose of this property for purposes of one or two units of affordable housing. Another prior town meeting action appropriated funds to allow the CPC to have this property surveyed and its wetlands delineated. This work has been done and incorporated into the RFP that was issued for the property and that RFP was shared with and approved by the select board several months ago. The RFP was structured so that it did not have to be conveyed to the highest bidder. It included evaluative criteria and the CPC recently evaluated the single proposal that was received at its July sixteenth meeting. Following this evaluation, the members voted to issue a recommendation to the select board to accept the proposal of Habitat for Humanity of Greater Goal. The RFP was advertised as required in the central register and the transcript. I also sent notices of it to several nonprofit housing developers previously discussed in select board meetings, including Tunnels to Towers and Building Homes for Heroes. However, the proposal for Habitat for Humanity was the only one that we received. Habitat for Humanity's usual service model often includes a contribution from the host community. This proposal does not ask for a cash contribution from the town. The only subsidy North Reading would provide would be the land. The proposal is for construction of a duplex containing a total of two affordable housing units that would be affordable in perpetuity at sixty percent AMI, which is more affordable than most of our affordable housing units in North Reading. The units would be added to the town subsidized housing inventory. Just in summary, the CPC, upon completing the RFP process and its evaluation of the proposal, received respectfully requests that the select board vote to convey Seventh St. Teresa Street to have Habitat for Humanity of Greater Goal. Street to have Habitat for Humanity of Greater Goal, according to their submitted proposal.
Mr. Chairman, through you, we have prepared a motion. Again, this is another step in what has been a multi-year process. Through you to the town planner, I believe the final step would probably be signing the actual transaction to convey the land, which is probably a few, a number of weeks away when we go through that process. But I believe that's what would conclude our involvement, at least at that point, right?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, I think there would probably be an extra site, I would imagine, on part of Habitat for Humanity, seeking volunteers in the community to help them to structure the house. I can see that, but that would be, you know, a little bit down the road.
Yes.
But there is a motion that has been prepared. We could basically allow the town to formally notify Habitat for Humanity as a sole bidder that they have been selected as a nominee. Again, this is at the recommendation of the Community Planning Commission. It is consistent with what was presented at town. I think a number of folks, conversations, I think we were hopeful that the town might be able to receive some sort of compensation for a parcel. We found that the standard is quite the opposite, that normally the communities asked to make a contribution. In this case, Habitat is not asking us to do so. They are asking only for the land.
Do you want to have a discussion?
We can do it now or later. Please, go ahead.
The neighbors, I think it's going from a one family to a two-family, does anyone ask the neighbors what they thought? Any negative reactions?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, we did initially have site visits for each of the properties that were being considered prior to the town meeting vote to authorize disposition of the property. We had a brief walkthrough, neighbors had been notified at the time. It's seven years ago now that that took place. This particular neighborhood is fortunate enough to have a variety. First, you have Main Street, then behind that, you have a larger multifamily apartment development. And then beyond that, behind that, then comes this property, and then further down the road, you have single, excuse me, single-family homes. So there was some discussion at the time, yes.
No negative reactions from the body neighbors?
I think more questions and concerns rather than actual negative reactions. I think anytime a parcel is developed that is, you know, vacant and wooded, there is a question about it. I think there would have been concern if there had been more than two units proposed. The actual zoning that was put in place, you know, back in 2008, actually allows for a more substantial development. It would allow for more units than two. But one of the compromises that was reached through the planning commission having meetings about it, you know, at the time, and coming to town meeting, and initially the select board not being willing to support it the first time around, was that there were, there had not been limits placed on, or further limits, I would say, placed on the number of units that could be developed. So, well, I'm sure it's every neighbor's preference to have nothing developed in the neighborhood. We didn't receive substantial enough opposition to it that it really raised the level of alarm too much. I think the questions were more about whether wetlands would be impacted, whether flooding would be increased in the general area.
Thank you, Senator. Anyone else? Mr. O'Leary?
Just what was the planning commission's vote? Was it unanimous? Was it?
Yes, yes, it was unanimous.
And again, I think just as a matter of comment, this has been a long process, as Danielle's pointed out, it's been a number of years since we, the initiation of this initiative was taken place. And the planning commission has done a good job as far as taking the monies that we provided for them, to find out what the wetlands were, delineating them, so we knew exactly what we had to offer. And this just brings it full circle. So I think it's a, it's a good step in the right direction. We have a lot more to do. So I appreciate your effort, Danielle, and the planning commission moving this forward. And look forward to seeing some affordable housing units being built.
I agree with that. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, on the theme of tonight, I was one of the people that was hoping to see one of the veteran groups put a bid in, and maybe build a couple of houses for some veterans. But with that not coming through, I totally support Habitat for Humanity and happy to see some affordable housing going in, so. And kudos to the CPC who are following through and getting it done. Thank you.
Mr. Massey can have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, based on the recommendation of the Community Planning Commission, I move to accept the proposal of Habitat for Humanity for 7 St. Teresa Street.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Just say, I think there's three other properties still being, going out in the same place, so we know that can become available. So we have three more chances, I think, to make that happen.
Just where are those in the process, Danielle?
The CPC decided to do the first one. Let's see how it goes, let's see how it all goes over, how it plays out. The RFP process, the, you know, the reaction of the neighborhood, the success of, you know, seeing the homes constructed. And then once we have a good handle on, you know, how this is working, and, you know, assured of, you know, success of the first project, then they said they would like to proceed with the second one. But the wetlands work that was paid for by town meetings a couple of years ago, that is complete for 57 Harewell Street. And we have not yet started the, the wetlands have been filed for the Oakdale properties, but we don't yet have the survey plans.
That's ongoing still, as far as Oakdale?
Um, yeah, the survey work, it's moving slowly, only because we know we have these other two in front of that one. But, but yes, it will be, it's proceeding, just slowly.
Thank you.
Any further?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can never sit anywhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Next, I was reviewing the board's original listing for the October 7 fall annual town meeting.
Before we begin on that, just something I'd like to make the board aware, and then maybe have further discussion. So the October 7 date is a conflict for two members of the board, one being me. Potentially, well, actually, we're both out of state.
Not together.
Not together.
Don't start talking.
Let me clarify, yes, separate businesses. She cuts hair, I manage money, very different.
I grow hair.
Thank you. And grow hair. So I asked Mr. Gilberto what the process would be to potentially, if the board would honor the request to move the meeting date. And Mr. Gilberto, can you just touch on the process a little bit?
Sure. I did speak with town council with regard to the question. And a couple of things just for the public to know. You know, the first is that we do have a charter provision that requires a hearing to be held, which I believe will be held in February, to select both the spring and the fall dates. It must be in the month of June and in the month of October. So the date of October 7th was selected at that hearing. Fortunately, we had not and have not signed the warrant for the October town meeting. That's not scheduled to happen until Monday, September 9. And that's sufficient timing to allow us to get out the mail, folks, ahead of the proposed meeting date. Talking with town council, we do have the ability to re-advertise, which will be in the newspaper and on the internet, another hearing to modify that date. It would need to be to another date in October, Business Day or Saturday, not in conflict with a state federal holiday or religious holiday. And then some other limiting factors that we have to deal with are, first, we need to get those town meeting actions completed, so that Finance Director, her staff, treasurer, the assessor can go through the tax rate recap process, which takes a bit of the time. We also have to have the facility available to us as well. So when we start talking about those things, we start really narrowing the dates, and certainly talking to Finance Director, I think we both feel no later than Thursday, October 17.
And I'd like to add, the importance is, and my concern is that, not that I don't think that town meeting could not function without me and Ms. Gonzalez, however, the issue becomes that if something happens, that another member falls ill or can't make it, the select board will not have a quorum. And that could be an issue. So that was the concern, that more of, you know, this town did a pretty good job before I got here in 2018, so I know it wasn't that, you know, it would fall apart. So just, I just wanted to add that, that that's why I saw it as a concern and asked Mr. Gilberto if there was a way. And, you know, I don't know, do you, it's so early, because I just asked this question, trying to, I think, when, you know, when I realized my conflict. But did you have a particular date in mind that then we can discuss?
Yeah, we were initially looking at October 21st, talking with Finance Director, just feel like that's pushing it too far, even though we were talking a couple of days, we're into about a week. We were looking at Tuesday, October 15th. Unfortunately, the moderator has a standing commitment, he is not able to be there that night. So we're sort of bumped to looking closely at Tuesday, Wednesday, excuse me, Wednesday, October 16th. So that's the Wednesday, the Columbus Day holiday. Certainly, there would need to be a hearing, we would need to have, you know, public input, and then make a determination, I think, at the hearing, which could be on September 9, which would be the night that you would normally sign the warrant. Hopefully, we want to advertise that hearing through the transcript through the website, and you pose the opportunity to provide feedback before we make a determination. But right now, that's the date that we're looking at.
Does the board mind having a conversation about that on September 9?
Yeah, I'm just a little, we were talking about the Wednesday? Generally speaking, we can always have Mondays.
And I think that's what the, after the hearing is advertised, that's what the discussion on the night would be, what if potentially the date would be?
But Monday's Columbus Day.
So that's why I'd have to go to the next week, but that could be a conflict. So that's, but that discussion has to take place after the hearing advertisement, because it wasn't the, you know.
I will, I have not yet received the AOK from the superintendent of school.
I guess I'll participate in the discussion, but I'm not generally in favor of moving the town meeting. I know you can't make it, and that happens, you know. The fact that maybe the board won't have a quorum, that might please some people. But, you know, the likelihood is slim. So generally speaking, I'm not in favor of moving it, but I'd be more than happy to discuss it and consider it a little bit more, see what the availability of the school is. Yeah, just deviating from a Monday night, first Monday in October, which we traditionally do. Okay, good, thank you.
Anyone else want to give input before we?
Yeah, I'm willing to move it to whatever you guys can attend.
Well, let's advertise that, Mr. Gilberto, please, and then we'll have a discussion on the 9th, and, you know, then anyone can give their opinion as well, because it's the public here. Congratulations. Thank you. Mr. Gilberto, we can move on. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, so we will advertise that for early on the evening of September 9, next regular meeting. I guess we just do the list again, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I am on a list there.
Can I just say, though, if it's not even available, you know, the date's not even available?
Well, that's just a date we threw out.
No, I'm saying if the schools, if the schools aren't even available at that time, you know, why have the discussion?
So we're gonna, that's not the only date you could do. You could do late in the week before, I don't know how late it would need to be, I don't know, capabilities, but.
Okay, all right.
Unfortunately, what happens is, you know, the sort of, the ideal spot, I think, is the middle part of October. We start getting too early, now we're worried about whether or not we get our free cash certified, which we've had that experience at town meeting, and it's not ideal. We start getting too late, we're putting that pressure on it. So there's not a great window to select from. We're really looking at those two weeks, the week of the 7th and 11th.
I already know for myself, like, I booked my travel around this, so I'm gone from the 8th, and then there's services on Saturday, the 12th, so I know I'm gone all the way up until the 15th.
But you'd be here the, and again, he's gonna have the bill check, so we'll just have that. And at the end, it's, you know, I mean, I'll just.
Go back, you go back.
The decision is made to keep the October 7 date on Monday, September 9. We will have sufficient time to mail a warrant out, and people will be prepared to do so.
Thank you.
The meeting to discuss the date would be Monday, September 9.
The day of town meeting is Monday, October 7.
When do those, Mr. Chairman, through you, when do those packets get issued to the residents? I just don't want to waste the money on seven packets.
No, so we're gonna be holding that until you make a decision. So if you make a determination to continue with October 7, then we'll be able to get them out in time. In either scenario, we have enough time to not have to mail them and then have to read twice. We did that once in recent years, and we're trying to avoid it again.
Thank you.
Great, so just up on the list there, and see if I can share this with folks who are watching, anyone can.
Also, Mr. Gilberto, if you will, as you go through these, if you can, I want to go back to Mr. O'Leary's suggestion as like a placekeeper for the potential.
For the ADU.
ADU, that, you know, maybe or maybe not, something be sponsored by the CPC. So I don't know where you would want to, you know, just something to think about.
I'll hunker to that at the end, maybe?
Okay.
So looking at the first nine articles, they are what I would consider at this point to be 13 articles, where we're making transfers generally from free cash into various accounts. In some cases, we pass over the transfer because the timing isn't appropriate for it. Article 7 is an opportunity to amend the operating budget, which certainly has, you know, which will be unique complexities to it this year due to the pressures within the budget. So it's very important to have that article on there, in the event we need to address a projected shortfall anywhere. Article 9 is amend the capital budget, we know that there will be requests for appropriation on that. The fire pumper to be funded, we believe by free cash, would be under that article, and I feel that would be a single one of the articles, that's capital. And you'll see, we've kind of generically written the two next articles, Article 10 and 11. They are tied to the two projects that we discussed as part of the debt exclusion, the Chestnut Street Bridge and the Fire Department ladder truck. The intention is to bring to you a warrant article that will allow for those two projects to be funded in whatever way town meeting chooses. So I believe the board's intention is to bring forth a potential for debt exclusion, which would involve borrowing. But we intend to write the article in a fashion that allows them to get authorized, because I think the Finance Director and I, both, along with Public Works Director and Fire Chief, feel like one way or the other, we have to have, you know, an answer with regard to these projects going out of town meeting. So our intention is to give town meeting that latitude to prove it in a way that it seems fit, whether it be use available funds, borrowing, or other things. So those two articles are really written very similarly. Article 12, money for legal expenses, I'm gonna consult with town council, maybe we'll take that off, we've carried it year after year, and all the time it shows up on warrant, people get a little bit animated. It really is not a time to report. At this point in the project, our understanding is that they're still in the wastewater design phase. The proverbial clock that would run for six months for the ZDA to have a hearing, does not start until they come back to us, that has not happened, at least, it hasn't happened today. So we're not anticipating any of that funding, because the litigation would not materialize until far after the application is reactivated. The next three.
We still have some.
I believe we have 2,000 plus thousand dollars in the bill. It's a significant.
We still have a significant amount of funds available to litigate.
Yes. The next three articles are, should look familiar, they are so-called the Beatty zoning articles, submitted by the Community Planning Commission by a three-to-one vote. They are, they have not yet been submitted for the recommendation from the Planning Commission, I may have overlooked that, I'm not quite sure what that timeline will be. We know that it was offered the night of town meeting, June, it came in, so it could be, I think, as late as that point in time. But we do have these three articles, they have been submitted. But we do have these three articles, they have been submitted to us, and they are consistent with what the board saw in June for a time of exaggeration. The final item I will address is the ADUs. We have a receipt for those, you know, property owners out there who've been inquiring. As soon as word got out that the housing bond bill was passed and that they were laying withdrawals into ADUs, we started getting inquiries, a lot of inquiries from people. People are very much looking to pursue this. And at first, we didn't really know what to tell them, but we weren't just handing over building permits at that point. And now we've gotten some more guidance from town council, which I believe I shared with the board. The law, the effect of the law does not help into effect until February of 2025. I believe the building inspector, the town planner, and I know myself are participating in a virtual webinar that's being put on tomorrow afternoon, where we hope to learn more about the timing of some of this, whether there might be any regulations that are forthcoming, guidelines. And we'll talk to the town council specifically about whether we're advised to take any action regarding zoning by law amendments. I can tell you, I've not heard that the planning commission is intending to submit anything, but I don't know that they have had a discussion about submitting it either, because of the meeting schedule of when this law is actually signed in the law.
Mr. Gilberto, could we, on September 9th, would that be too late, since the meeting, since the town meeting warrant's not signed or printed yet, would that be too late to add another article, if between now and then the CPC had the discussion?
No, but through you, Mr. Chairman, I would just say that CPC has a board, the department board committee of the town had more standing, if they had submitted an article prior to the deadline at four o'clock today, or, and anybody at that point in time. So the board would need to vote to accept that article, even though it would be passing at the deadline. I haven't talked to town council on whether that's problematic from a state approval standpoint. I think we would be okay, but we may want to just take our vote to ratify that acceptance, if that's what's actually happening. I will tell you, I'm not expecting we're gonna be advised to take any action, but we're certainly gonna ask our council on that.
So we'll open up, any questions for any, you know, one to 15 questions, comments? Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chair, the ADUs, you mentioned, Mr. Gilberto, you mentioned people looking to pursue. I'm just curious, do you know the incentive for the benefit at all of registering yourself as an ADU, registering your property to include ADU? Is there like a major incentive that people are going after?
I'm not sure that there's a registration that's out there, that I'm not clear on. There may be something that comes out of this new state law. What often happens is people come in the door, they're looking to construct a tail law apartment, we'll call it. They're advised of the restrictions of the building code that prohibit them from doing exactly what they want to do. So they build what their plans are and probably make adjustments after the fact. You know, in terms of, you know, how that all plays out, I think that's up to one clarity. So we're still, we're learning just as quickly as everybody else is. I just do want to say that we understand the interest, we understand people are looking to proceed, but we do not have the authority to issue building permits for excessive volume and above writing at this point in time. We know we will get something in some form come next February. Whether we're advised to do something, to choose to do something in the interim is a discussion, obviously, for the policymaking bodies, such as the board of the commission. I know that wasn't a great answer, sorry.
That's all right. We have to learn it too. The, as far as renters rights, I wanted to ask is, can you rent it out to, I guess, anyone? But if so, do then they get renters rights? And the reason I ask this is I think of worst-case scenario, old lady Sue rents out her shed that became an ADU, you know, a couple of kids come in, they trash the place, they're loud. How, how would she, I'm trying to see how that woman would be able to stop what they're doing, you know?
I'm gonna give you a bit of a combination of my understanding and opinion, which is that the state approved this because it's looking to create housing units. And I suspect, the one thing I saw was the restrictions on, on short-term, for instance. If that's a limitation that's out there, I'm not comfortable exactly what the incentive is. But I do think the state's intent in this is to create additional housing.
I think the other thing, Mr. Massey, with that, you run the risk, right? I mean, if you want the monetary, you run the risk that that could happen. And I feel like everyone's gonna, I see what you mean, but I feel like it's gonna come down to, if you built it and they came, and now you want them out, well, it may not be that simple. I wouldn't be shocked if that ends up being the answer in Massachusetts, just, you know, just based on other things. So, anything for the...
Sorry.
No, thank you very much, that was just, I'm learning too. The articles 13, 14, 15, is there any opportunity with this board would be up for discussion to move those to the front of the agenda? Reason is, is just to have citizens that are coming, sorry, seen as citizens that are able to come early and they want to leave early, they can't, they don't have to sit through the rest.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say that I put them in the order that they customarily appear with the zoning actions last, but I think that the order is up to the determination of the board prior to the warrant being signed. And then once it's signed, they must take.
But we could decide that next week, next week, sorry. September 9th?
Yes, you could. If there's feedback that the majority wants to do that, and you want to let me go now, it would be helpful.
I mean, honestly, Mr. Chair, it's a pretty short warrant. I don't think it's gonna be a late night. It doesn't look like, on paper, it doesn't look like a late night. And then I'm always worried that when you have those, the ones first, they hold on and leave, and then we don't have...
If you also have those other two articles as far as, you know, debt exclusion votes, which will generate some discussion as to, you know, how those projects are gonna be funded. So those are the only two big ones, and I would hope that the people who are interested in the last three are interested in those two also. The rest of it's pretty mundane, it's pretty routine.
It's pretty routine.
Yeah, so I would think, we're gonna be on article nine anyway, in probably ten minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, you'll see those ones, those ones are, but no, I hear you.
Yeah, last meeting was...
So my, my opinion on it is that, for this one here, there's, actually, besides the last three, I agree, but it seems like, forget number 12, but the last five articles are all important. So it just happens to be that that's like a third of the agenda. That's why I think it's, last meeting, I think we could have, if we got there quick enough, we could have finagled, because it was 34. So, but I definitely would see your point as well, but hopefully, I mean...
When we get to the meat of it, the dice will be young. How quickly we get through it after that?
Yeah, how quickly when we get to number 10 and 11.
I think the way that it's placed right now probably is appropriate, as far as having a town meeting. Take care of the business, it needs to be taken care of in relation to the debt exclusion votes and then to the zoning issues, personally.
Mr. Walden?
We're running a really tight calendar, and these are, you know, again, ADUs and the MBTA, these are really big issues that we should be having a really clear FAQs that, you know, define the facts. And we should be having that sooner than later. So we're not talking about plannings that are not real. So I don't know how to make that happen, I don't know who should be in charge of that, but on each of these, we really have to have vetted-out FAQs that are, have real answers, so people can make real decisions based on real information. Because I'm really worried that we're gonna be trying to just sort through noise that isn't even legit to what we're talking about.
Do you want to respond?
I'm trying to sort of respond, but more informational. I believe the planning commission is going to get a pretty extensive information on their website. We can certainly do things to try to point people at that, because there is quite a bit out there that they put together. I know I'll be looking, because I think one of the things that's out there is a question is the relevance to state grant funding, grants that we perceive in the past, grants that we perceive in the future, that's something I know, I'm only wanting to make sure that I have my hands going around. But there is quite a bit out there, and I believe we'll see through the website for this.
Has it been vetted by town council?
I believe that Danielle is actively...
Yes, that's good.
Wouldn't the state websites kind of have those FAQs anyways? Wouldn't the state websites have those FAQs anyways? I mean, I'm not sure.
I think more particularly, they're speaking to specific North Reading. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Specific North Reading. But also, another thing, when we, when we have the hearing, which I think is the second September meeting, where we have the hearing over the warrant articles typically there, I would expect that someone, at least Danielle, and maybe David, or the chair of the CPC, would be here to present 13 to 15, as they've done in the past, if it's their articles, correct?
Mr. Chairman, that's what would probably happen, yes. And I do believe would be helpful to have town council here as well.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary?
I tend to agree with Rich at this point. I mean, we kicked this around, we kicked it around in June a little bit. I think it's important for the public to understand the issues related to the, being proposed and what's being forced upon us. And I think the sooner that we get town council to answer some questions for us, state rep Jones, and even Senator Tarr to express their opinions and advice to us as a community, as how we handle it, I think that should be done sooner rather than later. And I think putting this off to, you know, a week before town meeting, to have a full-blown discussion of it, because I understand we have to have a public hearing on all the articles, that doesn't preclude us from having a discussion about them prior to. I would also like to see the planning commission take a position on these sooner rather than later, so that we know what they're proposing. I mean, they put forth what they had in June, their intention in June was not to even bring it up in October. It was an amendment that forced this to happen. So to me, I think it's important for them to, whatever the position is gonna be, take it, articulate it, let's discuss it before the public hearing process, so that everybody can just flush through it, flush through the details and come to an informed decision as to how they want to vote on it. But putting it off to the last minute, just before the week or two before town meeting, there's too much riding on it. You know, we need to be, we're either gonna be in compliance or we're not. And if we're not, you know, the town meeting has, we have an obligation to give town meeting as much information as soon as possible to make an informed decision. And if town meeting determines that they don't want to pass these things and remain out of compliance by December 31st, okay. But let's give them the information to do it, let's have it sooner than later. So, you know, we're, rather than waiting to the second meeting in September, which is the end of September, I think in our next meeting, we should have a discussion about it, invite the planning commission to come in and give us their opinion and tell us why they have a determination or they don't, what their concerns are, and have a civil discussion about it. And then have input from town council and our state rep and state senator as to how it came about, what their feelings are now, how should we proceed, and just get to the crux of the matter, rather than...
I will say, they have a meeting tomorrow, it's on their agenda. I'd be shocked before we're even talking about it that they weren't gonna talk about this, so I'm just looking there. And also, I think, to be fair, at town meeting, I think, Mr. O'Leary, you and Mr. Rudolph were heading to the same place, just, you know, the amendment made a little more, but I, I got a different opinion on it from him, so I'll take him for his word. But then we did do the amendment, so that assured it. But it does seem that maybe the request is through Danielle, and Mr. Gilberto, you can communicate it to Danielle, because she's gonna be at the meeting, of course, tomorrow, that what we would like is that they have a discussion and then maybe they prepare something for us to have it. I agree with Mr. O'Leary at our September 9th meeting. So then, so then maybe we're just tying up loose ends at the, whatever the second September meeting is, I don't have that in front of me. So that's something.
Okay, I think we should invite Rep. Jones and Senator Tarr, if their schedules allow, just to come in and, you know, patty. What are they seeing, what are they hearing, what do they know, and what do they suggest?
And town council.
Well, town council, that's it. And then we're there, we come to some understanding as to where all the parties are, going into town meeting, and people can have more opportunity to hear it more than once, to come to some conclusion and make an informed decision.
I mean, I just, I would... You can go first.
I would just encourage that be, you know, in both cases, it be fact-based to start, and then people can make their opinions afterwards. It should be fact-based to get started. So that way, we're all dealing with facts.
And the same thing with the ADUs too, because, I mean, we have a small, it appears as though we have a small window of opportunity to tweak our own zoning bylaws to comply with this new law. We should just take advantage of that if we can. If there's no need, then there's no need. So to, we can reserve a space for it and take it off. To me, I think it should be included. It's easy to take it off. And let the planning commission know they're just reserving some spot to address it, if they find the time to research what can be done, what can't be done. Because, you know, the new law, it's so far-reaching, it doesn't even require owner occupancy. You know, it's like, it's not like, you know, I want to put an ADU and, you know, have my kids move into my house and I move over here, and, or I have a disabled child that I want to move into an ADU. This can be speculative investment property where currently we're, we see in town as in, they're buying up properties, tearing the house down and building a, you know, a big, a big home. This could be the big home plus an accessory dwelling unit. I mean, what happened, my neighbor just now, you know, they spent $435,000 for a house and just sold it for $1.7 million. Had this been in place, it could have also had a 900-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. You know, so I think we're gonna be seeing an awful lot of, potentially, you know, speculative housing being built. And if we can address that somehow or another, fine. My guess is the legislature's gonna be tweaking this moving forward. Until then, the opportunity's gonna be there for investors rather than homeowners to address it. So I just think we need to vet it sooner rather than later, and we have an October town meeting to address it.
Mr. Gilberto, your hand up and then...
I did, yeah, I just want to add that, we're in the planning commission, Jeff Griffin just contacted the chapter saying that he was sure the CPC would be in a discussion about the new law in the near future, between the law and state. So they're preparing to have some discussion.
Any other comments on the MBTA? And by other, I'm really being narrow at this point.
The MBTA specifically, yes. Back on May 20th, I think it was one of my first select board meetings here, Mr. Pierce and Mrs. McKnight came up here and spoke. They mentioned 17 grants. They mentioned 17 grants. The other night, they mentioned three. So 14 of those grants that they mentioned a few months ago is now down to three, when we talk about factual info. So on May 20th, I asked for those grants, I said that I've never seen anything that stated which grants they were. And I, maybe this is me new to the process, but I don't know how we would be able to ask Mrs. McKnight, maybe it's, Mr. Gilberto, if you wouldn't mind? That's what I figured. To ask Mrs. McKnight or the community planning commission to present the grants that we have, and these grants that are at risk. How many have we received in the past? And the other question I asked was if it was a complete removal of those grants, or if there was a percentage of those grants. I'd just like to see, again, what they're dangling over us.
I think that'd be the FAQs, but I think that'd be enough, that'd be the...
That's a good, good question, good point, we should have that information. But we also should confer with our state rep and state senator, because I've had conversations with Representative Jones and some discussion about what's available, what we may be interested in applying for, and what we wouldn't be eligible to apply for if we didn't comply. So I think that's why it's important, I think, to have the state rep and state senator's input as to what they see. And again, a lot of those instances just kind of crop up, and I know the town administrator and state rep talk regularly, there's an opportunity, this might fit in, and fortunately, you know, they're very much in tune as to what our projects are, and try and fit some into it. I just think it's important that they're included in the discussion.
Any other questions not regarding article 13 to 15? And again, it seems like we're gonna have some, it's probably gonna dominate discussion in September, so we're gonna have plenty of time. And I also, like I always say, I'd like to defer this to the CPC until we absolutely have to get involved if we do, when we have discussion, just because that is in their purview at this time. So, Mr. Gilberto?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, so we're gonna defer, put in place holdup for ADUs?
No, the ADU, I thought, I thought Mr. Gilberto said if we choose to, then we can take a vote to add that on September 9th, correct?
I guess that was more if you were submitting an article, you certainly have the ability to add an article. I have to admit, I'm not sure what the article would say. At this point, I'd like to talk to town council about... At this point, I'd like to talk to town council about that. We could write something very generic, but it wouldn't be anything more than...
But the select board could vote on the 9th to choose.
Yeah. Okay.
Next agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman O'Leary, this was an agenda item that was requested, I believe, by Mr. Wallner at the last regular select board meeting. I believe you have in your packet some feedback that was provided to him with regard to at least two if not three topics. One is the quantum of vote for a yes or no ballot, which is also known as a paper ballot. The time limits for discussion for particular warrant articles. And then I know that there's a desire to have some conversation with regard to use of technology. So, I vote for Harold Wilkes to Wallner. I think he kind of initiated this, so I'm going to give this to him.
I want to turn to Mr. Wallner. Can you begin?
I'm sorry?
You want to set up a discussion?
Oh, yeah, sure. So, I'm being joined by Rachel Fisher and, with Dan Kennedy, is that correct? And Lori Lyons is being joined here, and there is this. And so, they all came forward to me after the town meeting, because what we experienced was, there was an hour delay when the procedure for going, I don't even know what to call it, the determine...
Paper ballot.
Paper ballot, yes. And so, they went out and studied some other towns, and right now, it only takes 25 people in order to go to a paper ballot. Other towns, other than Redding, are all done by percentages. So, 10%, 2/3, 25%, 50%, 25%. So, the goal being is that, like in this case, I think we had 800 or 900 people at the meeting, if by 25 people wanted the paper ballot, it delayed everything by an hour because it took a long time to get through it. And then we weren't able to get to other things that we could have gotten through that night and caused a lot of aggravation for people. So, based on their survey, they're finding other towns do it by percentage, which seems to be a more logical choice. So, without changing any of the words except from "should 25 voters stand" to just "should there be a percent of these voters present standing in their place?" And so, it's the same one, it was just changing it from 25 to a percent. When we brought this up, there was also the thought of instead of changing the words, that we actually use clickers for tabulating votes, which we've never done before. So, we just skip paper ballots all the way, we can get instant results. So, I think town administrator was going to investigate them, I think, to find out what technology might solve this problem.
Yeah, there is technology out there that could certainly assist us with more quickly getting a sense of the room. There are other communities that have done that. In order to do so, we would need to revise, I think, a few sections of our bylaws in order to allow for that use, to do so. So, that would require action at a town meeting and then approval by the Attorney General, and then ultimately to incorporation of funding to acquire the technology or rent the technology in order to do it.
So, either way, we have to touch bylaws.
Yes. If you were looking to change the quantum, yes, it would require a bylaw change. If you were looking to adjust the requirements for speaking, the limits on speaking, that would be a bylaw change. If you were looking to initiate electronic voting, the language actually says we're supposed to stand for each vote. We do it by raising the hand, but if you read the bylaws, it actually says something different, so right away, it is something that we might want to look at. But we're talking with the town clerk as well, you know, there's a need to amend bylaws in order to make the changes that I think folks are talking about.
And I don't think this is uncommon in other towns. I think other towns are adopting this type of technology. Am I right when I say that?
Yeah, there are other communities that are moving in that direction. You know, some are open meetings, some are representative town meetings.
Yeah. So, I think, you know, I don't know if we can invite them to speak, Rachel, I definitely had some thoughts about it, but, you know, there was just frustration. People shouldn't be going to town meetings being unnecessarily frustrated.
They shouldn't stack meetings.
Hold on, hold on, we're not...
Shouldn't be unnecessarily frustrated. So, you know, if we can find ways to be more efficient and still have the same results, same rights for voters and everything else like that, let's do that. So, that's the suggestion.
Mr. Gilberto.
I hear a lot of feedback from people during the course of the day. I hear, I often hear many sides of many issues, and this is one where since June 10th and 11th, I've gotten quite a bit of feedback. And I certainly don't want to overstep, but recognizing the amount of feedback and the strong feelings that people have on, I won't even say both, because I think there's many sides of this particular issue, we need to integrate the technology into it. One thing the board may want to consider is whether it would be beneficial to get a sense from the town meeting itself, to the extent it wants to pursue things, and whether or not there ought to be an aggregation working group committee to do that review and report it back to the town meeting or to the select board. I get concerned a little bit. I think we've heard some great feedback from folks, again, from multiple different spots with strong feelings about it. I worry a bit, though, that we're not in the town meeting setting where we're having this conversation, and so that's a body in and of itself that may have a voice that wants to be heard. I know the argument can be, well, you know, they can vote one way or the other, or whatever bylaw change that you make, and that's certainly an alternative. But I do have to wonder whether it might be beneficial to do some sort of more organic review of these options that bring, either to you or to the town meeting. I do feel the need to offer that, based on some of the things that we've experienced and other issues in the past few years, and the strong feelings that are out there.
So, here's how I look for a discussion about this. There's two things here. One is whether or not to change the rules of the 25 people stand up, but to me, it's much simpler. The idea that we can have a more efficient way of voting, I don't even, I, going to town meeting to say, would you like a more efficient way of voting, where people can vote yes or no, I, you're voting on how to vote. Now, which I think is separate than voting whether or not that in the, and again, let's just bring this forward, and then I'll open discussion. If we had a way to vote, then you can say yes or no with the click of a button. This becomes moot. Because unless the technology breaks down during that meeting, there is no, I mean, I'm assuming there must be some language. I think Mrs. Gilbert said something like 113 communities or something have adopted it.
There are quite a few there.
So, there must be some language that says, unless you can prove that the technology is malfunctioning, I mean, even if 25 people get up, I mean, you'll have to make an argument that, well, the system's not working. So, to me, I think that would, it becomes a moot point. And that's just a way of voting. You're not changing any rules, you're not, you're just saying, we're going to, we're going to make voting, you know, 2024, and hopefully it works better than our mics. So, that's how I'd like to open the discussion, that I'd like commentary from the entire board on both things, on whether, one, is just proposing to, to pretty much bring it to the year 2024, and like, we have technology for everything else. And then the second one is the opinion on whether or not we should change, you know, that if that does not work, we should go to what is existing. So, I'll start on this side of them, just because I'm always looking this way, sorry.
I used to do it to you.
Yeah, Mr. H, I used to sit here like waving, like, it was a wave.
Mr. Mahasi. Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. This, just wanted to start, this is a citizen's concern from June 10th to June 11th. First line says forwarded to the select board, beverage wall and their select board on August 4th, 2024. I was not on that email, for whatever purpose. As far as the subject and what I've...
No, 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 that isn't what I meant. This was forwarded to me on that date.
About to us.
It was in your package, in your select board package tonight. And that's when everybody saw it, the person.
Forwarded to the select board, beverage wall.
To be clear.
The 25 people I don't necessarily look to change, I think that's democracy, it's been applied for a long time. But I agree with Mr. Sudo that you change the mechanism of it, and all kind of goes away. I do remember Mrs. Dupa maybe presented this before. It came to about $33,000, $30-something thousand dollars.
It's not a lot considering.
A thousand? About $33,000 a pop, that's pretty good now. The citizen is wondering how many do you order, and what happens is the, you know, the time that 1,300 people show up and you have a thousand, like, oh, that's maybe a different scenario, but that's all I got.
So, I'm sorry, so was that, you like the technology idea, or you don't?
No, I don't mind the technology. If the price is right for the technology, it's basically just making town meeting more efficient. I'm all for it. But the 25 voters, I think, is reasonable, and the only reason is because if something's so out of the blue, something's so out of the water, that people really think, no, this isn't right, they're not going to stand. If you've got 25 people to stand, that could be more than 10% of your town meeting. So, it's a pretty good indication of what the crowd thinks. Thank you.
$1,000?
Yeah, I think we're behind the times. I think it's time to update and get the electronic. This clerk has asked, and the former clerk always had it, I mean, it's been asked year after year after year and never funded, so I think the time is right to do it. But it brings up another, just off the subject a little bit, with the bylaws, that I think we're overdue to maybe form a committee and just go over all of our bylaws and update them. Just throw that out there.
Got to add three hours to every day. But thank you. Mr. O'Leary, you're going to go last, because like I always...
I took it.
Mr. Wallner.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, you're right, 25 is meaningful when it's 200 people, but when it's 1,000, it's 2.5%. So, I, but I really think the technology is what we should do. We should be having more efficient ways of tabulating, more efficient ways of moving through our meeting, that we get the temperature down in the room, people don't get frustrated, and they'd be encouraged to come back to more town meetings in the future. So, if we were up to date, I think we'd get more participation, and people would feel better about the entire experience. And I think we should definitely move on to technology. And then I don't care if it's 25 or a percentage, because we could instantly have a decision. So, I think technology is what's up.
Mr. O'Leary.
Well, having stood up there for a number of years, and also served as the board for three or four years, you know, the first thing according to the bylaws right now is voice vote, you know, so we have to rely on the moderator's hearing. And if I were the moderator, telling my hearing isn't as good as it was a few years ago, for sure. And then what happens is then you go to a standing count, which is really raise your hand, and then you go to, you know, paper ballot with 25 people. So, the technology is here as far as efficiency goes. The moderator shouldn't have to be called upon to trust his hearing one way or the other. People just put the clicker in, you have a vote and a determination on that. You know, as far as a percentage thing, we did away with a quorum for a regular town meeting several years ago because of the lack of attendance. You know, so 25 might be a significant portion of, if you had 100 people, then that's 25% standing, you know? But to your point, if you had 1,000 people, it's 2.5%. So, if you're going to make it a percentage, to me, anything having to do with a count, whether it be a standing count or a paper ballot, is a fallback because the technology has failed.
Right.
You know, so the bylaw would just have to recognize that first mode of counting is the technology, and in the event that it fails, this is the methodology that takes place, which is the manual counting of votes, raise your hand, you know, a voice vote, raise your hand, and then a paper ballot with a certain percentage of the people present voting to do it. So, it's not that complicated. And to me, it's something that should be tackled sooner rather than later, and we can put a warrant article on to propose a bylaw change to allow the technology. Why are we going to wait till next June?
I knew this meeting was too short, or is it bad?
No, no, I'm just, truly, why would we wait until next June to decide? Because there isn't much to talk about, other than, do you want the technology or not? The consensus appears to be yes, you know, because it makes a lot of sense, and it's here, it's available, then, you know, let's make the proposal to change the bylaw and find some planning for it, you know, to implement it. Then again, it'd be for next, it'd be for next June, it wouldn't be for this October.
No, change the bylaw, how we can vote.
See, we have to change the bylaw first and then appropriate the money to get it. So, we can do that in October. It won't be effective till next June, when the next town meeting is, unless we have a special in between. But, you know, there's still a process where you change your bylaws, it goes to the AG's office for approval, so that takes two or three months, and then you're ready to go.
So, we need to add that to the warrant.
Yeah, just add it to the warrant, why would we, why would we wait?
Also, I would like...
I think there's a general consensus that people are not opposed to the technology, you know? And as far as protecting people's interest in relation to the privacy of it all, that's built right into it.
Yeah.
You know, and I know people felt inconvenienced, you know, by what occurred in June. I'm not concerned about the inconvenience of it, that's part of the process and part of the beauty of it. The reason that this bylaw is in place is because some people are not comfortable raising their hands either in favor or opposed to a specific article, for whatever reason, because they don't want to fight with their neighbor, or their, years ago was because they thought the police chief was going to stop them and give them a ticket, you know? So, it's, which is ridiculous. But people have their fears. So, the process here is good, and it's important to ensure that it's retained, because people have a right to the secrecy of the ballot, if it's needed and warranted. On a close votes, and even on some votes that aren't that close, but people are passionate about, people kind of like to be able to express themselves quietly and effectively. So, I think the clickers do it, but I think there also needs to be a mechanism for, if the technology fails, to protect those people's interests, no matter how inconvenient it may be.
So, I'd like to hear, if they'd like to, from Mrs. Fisher for bringing the article, but also then from Mrs. Fillmore, because she's worked a lot of these, so I'd like to hear a few. So, please.
I would love to, yes. Hi, I'm Rachel Fisher, 271 Elm Street. Thank you, Mr. Wallner, for bringing this up. I thought that was a really good synthesis, and I hadn't even thought about the tech solution for that, and really do support it. It seems to me there should be an app for that, right? Like, it shouldn't be too expensive? And I think that'd be wonderful, because then we don't have to rely on voice votes, and we get the results right away. It was really frustrating at town meeting in June to have the delay be so long and to not be able to pick up business that I cared a lot about afterward, because it had gotten so late and I had a conflict with the next night and all those things. So, I just really appreciate the discussion and appreciate, you know, creativity to see what we can do to make it more efficient and more rewarding to be at town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it forward.
Same name as before. In regards to the technology, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I've worked town meeting, and town meeting is very short in people, unless of course you have something, people saying, oh, we're not going to do this because, we're not going to teach your kids because we don't have the money to do it, whatever. So, you stack the meeting with 500 people from school-aged children, or parents of school-aged children, and they vote, but you never see them again for another 10 years until the override comes up, or when the override comes up again. These people you don't see, and I've been working at town meetings for many, many years. You don't see these people, unfortunately, especially when it comes to the budget, because you're voting on millions and millions of dollars, but they don't care. You know, so, but the technology is good. But in regards to the paper ballot, this is for the people to vote and not be intimidated from some of these 500 people that come to vote these things in so that they, you know, can say they did it. And that's the thing. The paper ballot is to protect the integrity of the people and their privacy. And 25 people isn't a lot. They, at night, there was more than 25. I think there were about 70 people that stood up. So, to say it's not right, yes, it does take time. But you know what? That's democracy.
So, it seems like, to summarize...
I think, let's just do that.
I'm...
No. There was another...
One, one of the petitioners as well?
All forward together.
Okay, please. Sorry, I just...
That's why I came.
Again, they were, just to be clear, they were going to bring it forward, is it a citizen's petition? Unless we sponsor it or do something around. So, they always have the right to do whatever they want to do, with 10 signatures.
My name is Larry Susie, 4 Alston Road. Yeah, I just want to say, I think this is a great idea about the technology. My concern is, you know, the purpose of the paper ballot is to protect the privacy. However, it can be weaponized, and I think, I think the idea there is... And I think, I think the idea there is, a group of people want to frustrate the rest of the town and get people to leave. It was a time, it was an hour and 15 minutes. Had they, right after the vote, genuinely got up and adjourned the meeting, I think the next step, had that person not adjourned the meeting, was going to call for another paper ballot, and I would have walked out of that point. So the paper ballot is a tool that can be weaponized. It's unfortunate that there's people that would do that, but I think that's the reality of it. So you might have to have a bylaw to prevent that, so that the purpose of it is to protect the privacy and not allow it to be weaponized. And the way to do that is to increase the threshold to 25 to 25%. That makes it harder to find a group of people that would want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's do it. So to Mr. O'Leary's point, if we're going to do, yeah, I mean, Mr. Gilberto, can you give me the rundown on if we wanted to add that article to appropriate and change, you know, how we vote? Or to have, to that be option one? However, it needs to be written by town council. And then option two will be, you know, if the internet breaks, what we've always done. But then also, you know, again, what is the board's opinion on adding to change? So, again, and I'll just say, because I've seen it in the past, getting a citizen's petition on doesn't take exactly, you know...
Yeah. I mean, the deadline has passed for this current warrant for a citizen's petition, but they can get...
So just think about it.
It's even a small number of petitioners that can call for a special town meeting, you know. So I mean...
150.
Yeah, and so it's like...
I'd probably suggest we just focus on the technology and not get into the 25, 25% at this point, because I think that it'll become, like you said, actually, a moot point. Because we'll be able to speed through it so fast anyways. And then if it's somehow, after some experience, we need to readdress that, we readdress that. Let's not overwhelm the issue. It's just, we need new technology to make the town meeting go more efficient under the current rules. So we're not changing any of the rules, we're just changing the method of how we calculate the vote. That's it.
Mr. Massey?
That's an easy, I think that's very easy digest, and we don't, you know, we're not getting into any other issues.
Just on that, that we change for the technology, which I think we're all in agreement. But for right now, we table the discussion about the changing the bylaw for the 25 count. Does that, or, how's that sound?
We're going to get a discussion on what we're changing it to.
Or what this proposed warrant article would be, that we all agree that to update how we vote with the technological functions, but not have the discussion on changing the bylaw from, you know, a percentage or any of that.
Yes. And just to be clear, too, just so people know, we will have a hearing that people can ask questions about that.
And then a debate at town meeting, right, on the floor. So let's just forget that, that, you know, no matter what happens at these meetings, and there's a whole thing. But again, I think that the path of least resistance, as of right now, seems that... And I do think that one will take care of the other, unless we get unlucky enough that it doesn't work on that particular night. I mean, other than that, I mean, you know, if there's something on the floor and it's 200 votes to one, I mean, I guess 25 people could still stand up, but it's like, I mean...
If there's 113 towns are using it, it's probably very reliable.
Mr. O'Leary, for you?
No, I'm in favor of moving forward with the technology and amending the bylaws to have that be the first means of vote counting, in that the, any backup would be what the current bylaws are. You know, so the moderators will call for a vote through the, through the technology, whatever the result is it is, and if the technology fails...
Then we go back.
The fallback is what the current bylaws are.
Mr. Gilberto, how could we, could we get, would that just get something we would get on for September 9?
Yeah, we would work with the town clerk and town council to...
To write the article.
Probably two articles.
Two articles, one to appropriate.
Okay, yes, we have to pay for it. Maybe we can get a more good, a better estimate for that on what it costs? Just because Mr. Massey was correct, that I do think, when I talked to the clerk, you could buy 1,000, and then you could rent 300 from the same company if you thought you were something big.
The other thing is the shelf life, the life expectancy of those?
Yeah, I don't know.
The junior member of the board is responsible for changing all batteries.
I'll change that.
We'll do it to our needs. We can do 100 each easily.
If I could just add, my hometown, my cousin is the chair of the board there, and I did discuss this with him, that they recently switched over to the technology, and they are just so happy with it. They said it works great, they've had no issues, they'd never go back.
Is it ready? Doesn't ready do that already?
I don't know. They have representative town meetings, so they have a finite group of people.
Oh, that's why they only need 20 votes, because representative, that's why. So it's actually a very large percentage.
I was wondering why it was 20.
Okay, well, all right. Well, thank you, thank you for bringing it up. Thank you for your commentary.
Thank you very much.
Fillmore?
Yeah, and I just meant, the paper ballot is to protect you, you know. And some of these 400 people that came to the meeting that never come, came down and threatened the person who happens to be my daughter because she called for a paper ballot, because they were afraid that vote might change.
Well, just check that box, privacy. Unless you show somebody your thing, then I can't. Which has happened, like what I did. So, okay, thank you, everyone, for that. We will move on to reviewing the June 27 open meeting law complaint. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board is in receipt of a open meeting law complaint filed by resident Adam Austin in regard to the June 27th, 2024...
Ex-resident.
Former resident.
Former resident. Can I say resident?
Unless El Paso's a neighborhood in...
Former resident.
Lost colony. Lost.
Former resident submitted an allegation of violation. The allegation, I guess the best thing to do is probably read it, read what he says, which the law requires us to do, by the way. So reviewing the complaint, the complaint writes that the law requires the chair of the public body to prepare a meeting notice, the some of the topics the chair recently in the space would be discussed. He alleges significant deliberations were held in open session that were not listed on the agenda as items to be discussed in an open session. Before the meeting was conducted, it was not clear to the public what executive session agenda item would entail. However, in my perspective, evidence that this item on the agenda was intended to be connected procedures to the select board policy regarding the possible removal of a public official or officer. Members of the select board, it would have been obvious that there was at least a 50% chance of a significant discussion occurring in open session. There was no way for any member of the public to understand that this deliberation would occur in open session, or that they would have the opportunity to observe it. Procedure was, that select was following during the meeting is attached as the board policy. Agenda failed to provide proper notice in significant open session discussion according to procedural guidelines for the removal of an appointed committee. There was 100% chance that the board would deliberate on the issue of meeting executive session. This planned discussion was properly listed on the agenda. However, those procedures clearly indicated that it was at least as likely that there would be discussion on the same topic in an open session. So the allegation seems to be the discussion that happened in open session not being listed in open session. The remedial action proposed was future agendas would include all topics to be discussed in open session, especially those that can be reasonably anticipated. And any decisions that were made in deliberations that were held in open session but were not listed as open session, be voided and be considered as necessary through deliberations that are published as items on the meeting agenda. And for those who don't know, this was a meeting where the board was having a discussion to determine whether to have a hearing on the potential removal of a appointed board or committee member, in this case, a committee member. So I'm going to just, I provided the select with a draft of a response that was prepared by town council with regard to this, which I will...
Are you seeing work?
I don't even read it.
So, and I'm kind of paraphrasing from town council's response. I can read the whole thing if you would like, but I'm paraphrasing. Council writes that the board appropriately entered a new executive session under purpose one, to protect the reputation and character of and to discuss the complaints brought against a public official. The open meeting law was eliminated to, was, the open meeting law was an act to eliminate much of the secrecy surrounding deliberations and discussions. Public body must post notice of every meeting at least 48 hours in advance. Notices must include listing of topics the chair reasonably anticipates will be discussed at the meeting. The list of topics must have sufficient specificity to reasonably advise the public of the issues to be discussed at the meeting. However, when discussing an individual in executive session pursuant to purpose one of the public body, may omit identifying information about that individual from the meeting notice where the body is concerned about protecting the privacy of that individual. Purposes designed to protect the rights and reputation of individuals. Here, the board was concerned about the privacy of the individual whose reputation and character were discussed during the executive session, and thus the meeting notice properly did not identify the individual by name. Second, the board followed all requirements entering a new executive session. The individual subject to the executive session was notified in writing at least 48 hours in advance. The board voted by roll call vote to enter the executive session as well. The board also announced that it would reconvene in open session before entering into executive session. The agenda item listed in this matter stated executive session general laws 30A, 21A, purpose one, to discuss the discipline or dismissal of complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. The complaint, Mr. Austin, appears to be arguing the board was required to also include a specific stated open session agenda item on the agenda for the same purpose if the public official had indicated prior to the meeting their desire to have the discussion held in open session, since the open session discussion would arguably have been reasonably foreseeable. Complaints are due, however, is without merit. Attorney General specifically addressed this issue in OML 2019-150. The board did not violate the open meeting law by convening an executive session under purpose one, when the subject of this discussion had earlier expressed a desire to hold a discussion in open session. In support of this determination, notwithstanding the meeting notice inclusion of an executive session, there's never guaranteed that a public body will enter into executive in the first place, executive session. Public body must meet in open session and vote to enter a new executive session. The vote could fail, or could otherwise, the public body could otherwise choose not to convene an executive session. Interested members of the public may attend the open session of the public body so that they can learn the topic to be discussed in executive session and to be present in case the public body does not enter into executive session and set hold discussion in open session. The board noticed the topic to be discussed in executive session under purpose one, because the chair intended to hold the discussion in executive session, unless the subject of the discussion appeared and requested otherwise.
How's the multiple?
Yeah, I'm not that...
How much was this, pops?
I don't want to talk about that.
Attorney General also in the decision specifically addressed the allegations directly relevant to the instant matter by determining that the board does not have to have an additional specific open session item listed on the agenda, to be able to speak about the same issue in an open session, which is the crux of the issue. So I'm going to stop reading. I think folks understand the issue. We had a meeting that was posted in executive session. There was a vote that needed to be taken. Once in executive session, there were questions made to come back into open session. That was something that I think folks realized might have happened. It is what happened. For the record out there, there are draft meeting minutes of the public discussion that occurred, both on the 27th and at the following meetings, if anyone is interested in. So the recommendation is to basically, just make sure we follow the procedure here.
Any questions on either, any questions on anything that Mr. Gilberto just said? And I will start on this side.
So, just so I can read this, because it was given to us, this guy who's acknowledged receiving the open meeting law complaint, which we've done. Discuss generally the allegations of complaint, which I think I've reviewed here for you all. Discuss the response and review the draft prepared by council, and then vote to issue the response consistent with the discussion of tonight's votes.
And that, Mr. O'Leary, anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Wallner?
I read the note carefully, and I agree with it.
Mr. Massey?
Yes, I do. Unfortunately, I do not agree with this letter. Obviously, this was about me, so I took this personal to read every word and also review our videos again, and review some emails that I've sent to you guys, and what's been requested. Unfortunately, I don't disagree. As a matter of fact, I actually think this letter has a lot of incorrect statements by our council. The reference continues to be purpose one, and I underline purpose one as it's mentioned here probably about a handful of times. A public body may omit identifying information about that individual from the meeting notice where the body is concerned about protecting the privacy of that individual. I just was wondering where the concern was, to protect the privacy of myself. As I think, as soon as I got that letter and email, I responded. The first, first line says, I'd like to request this meeting to be open. I never saw the board concerned, it says the board was concerned. You guys actually mentioned it was a board policy. The complaint's assumed argument, however, is without merit. I would disagree. Posted improper executive session, chose to hold open meeting. Unless the subject of the discussion appeared and requested otherwise, which I did. The attorney general also in that decision, so there's been contact between our council and the attorney general. I haven't seen any of that correspondence, whether a board member or an individual.
No, no, that's in general, Mr. Massey.
That's opinions that the AG has already issued, regarding these matters. That wasn't a direct conversation between our council and AGs. Counsel is quoting AG determinations from prior cases, guidance.
Protect the privacy of the individual. Again, I, me personally, I disagree with the letter. Don't think it's very true. I think, I have a number of questions on our town council. I don't know if now's the time to do it, or what you think. I don't want to be, consider not talking to the board before making any further comments, so I wanted to respect the time.
We can have a discussion about, that's a bigger conversation, not related to this. But thank you for that. But no, no, I'm sorry, thank you for that. But if you have some more, Mr. Massey, please.
No, I think that's all, yeah.
Mr. Gonzalez? And I'm also.
There's a motion. I don't know whether the wishes are clear or not, maybe not.
You make the motion, isn't it? Doesn't have to support it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the response to the June 27, 2024 open meeting law complaint, as prepared by town council, and to direct town council to send the response.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Gonzalez, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Finish one second. Personally, I was the one who went to this. This letter is not accurate, period. Not all of your correspondence, I want to say. This is, this would be wrong for you guys to approve when you don't understand the history and correspondence of it all. Happy to forward it, my opinion. If you guys vote for it, yes, you're just dismissing what I have to say, which is fine. I understand the process, but these are my, these are my comments, and I stand very strong.
Thank you. Mr. Massey, anyone else? Mr. O'Leary?
I'm not looking to dismiss anything you feel or believe, that's okay. What's been called into question is whether or not the board violated the open meeting law procedurally. The town council has outlined what's required of us and what we did. And it does not appear, based upon council's opinion and previous opinions and guidance issued by the attorney general's office, that we did violate the open meeting law. So that's what this is all about. Forget the specifics of what we talked about.
Well, no, I think it's reasonably anticipated, reasonably anticipated. And I think you mentioned a 50% chance. My position is that it was reasonably anticipated. It was black and white in writing.
But what council is responsible for opining on is whether... But what council is responsible for opining on is whether or not we were in violation of the open meeting law. He's not here necessarily to defend our position. If we were wrong, he would tell us we were wrong. You know, he would tell us we were wrong, and then we'd have to take some remedial action or whatever, moving forward, do something, do things differently. What's being said here is that how it was handled was appropriate and handled appropriately according to law and what's required of the open meeting law. Now, whether you believe there should have been an agenda item, public agenda item, which is really what you're talking about here, for the potential of going back into open session, that's already been opined by the attorney general's office that that's not necessary or required. And so, we met those requirements. That's all. So, I'm not arguing, you know, whether or not it should have been on here. To me, I wouldn't have had any problem with it being as an agenda item anyway, and then just say, you know, if it was decided that we weren't going to go into open session to discuss it, it would just be passed over. So, but the concern is, general concern for the open meeting law is, again, people's reputation and all the rest goes along with it. So, all town council did, just give us an opinion as to whether or not we handled it appropriately based upon the open meeting law, our own policies, and that's it. And the opinion is yes. So, not the specifics of-
Yeah, I don't think the town council has the specifics and the information to, but that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, I get you.
Any further discussion?
But again, and I, I don't want to diminish your feelings and your strong feelings about it. I'm with you a hundred percent, but, but the opinion appears to be reasonable in my eyes and my reading of it in how it was handled according to the open meeting law requirements and the complaint that was filed against us. And we now have an obligation of the open meeting law to respond publicly to it, and that's what we're doing.
And I understand why you'd be in favor of it, because you put us in the position of both of these. So, you put us in the position to get to these hearings. Why would you not be in favor of this ending?
I didn't put us in the position. I did not put us in the position.
All right, we're gonna-
But anyway, so I, I think, you know, council's opinion is right.
Any further discussion? Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Or one motion carries? Mr. Gilberto, update on ARPA?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple slides that I'm gonna share. Stack up on the screen. If you could, turn the lights. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is an update that's come on the agenda as a result of the board's, I think, last meeting where there was some discussion regarding the debt exclusion and the use of potential ARPA funding for projects. So, I just put a slide up here that was prepared in, I think, back in January, right? Was the last time we reviewed it. Just showing, you know, what can happen, what the use of the funding is. I'm not gonna revisit all of that. You know, we have quite a bit of flexibility for the use of ARPA funding. The challenge is the timelines that we're faced with. I think everyone in the room is aware we need to be, not only have obligated, but under federal government's definition of obligation, have to contract to expend this funding for any purpose that we identified by December thirtieth of this year. And then we need to spend the money by December thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. So, here's what the deadlines are. One of the alternatives besides project-specific allocations is to effectively use the funding for revenue replacements. So, we do that by the town accountant, finance director, reporting to the federal government and such to the state government. We're using the funding as basically a revenue stream. And what happens is, at the end of that current fiscal year, it basically becomes more free cash or available funds that are revenue sources that we were not necessarily anticipating. And it becomes available to us to use in accordance with the appropriation of free cash funding, which would, in this case, be roughly a year, a few months from now, next fall. So, you know, town meeting next fall. And we talked a little bit about that. The board had a discussion back at the middle and end of twenty twenty-three to identify projects for which they were going to obligate the funding. I'm just trying to bring this up since we're bigger than we can. Unfortunately, this Zoom displays not the best. But just going from the top, we acquired some COVID-19 test kits in the amount of twenty-six thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Those funds have expended. That project is complete. We allocated one point four million dollars for Park Street Bridge design and completion. That project is now out to bid, and we are projecting to enter into a contract by December thirtieth, which would comply with the requirement and to do the project over the next two construction seasons and comply with the expenditures. The turf field, twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. That funding has been spent. That project was completed last fall. April and Chestnut Street, we've spent above nine thousand dollars of that funding at this point, but we are under contract for work already, and will expend that funding by December thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. So, we're in, we're in good standing at that point with regard to that allocation. The Main and Concord Street sewer final design, that was a five hundred thousand dollar allocation that we used. Fortunately, because of the availability of some state funding, we were able to spend those state funds first for that phase and did not need to end up utilizing any of that five hundred thousand dollars for that wastewater project. We've since, the board has since voted to terminate the activities with regard to that project, so it's not proceeding, and that five hundred thousand dollars is, for lack of a better term, available. The fire station design development phase was a seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollar allocation. We have completed that work, and there's roughly six thousand dollars of that that's left that will not likely be spent for that net use. And then the so-called, sorry, the north and central intersection design and construction, we have two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for that. That has been fully expended by DPW for that project as it's nearing completion. So, we are in good standing with that project. And then the town center downtown sewer project, which for those who may not know, is a project that would connect the existing municipal buildings in the historic center of town with the middle high school wastewater treatment plant. That project is in a permitting phase right now, but we are looking to try to complete that and then put it out to bid so that we keep a contract by the end of this year. So, when you look at those three numbers in red, the five hundred thousand, the six thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars, and the one million, six hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's sort of the money that's sort of left for discussion at this point. So, why is the one point six million dollars up for discussion? You may know, you may recall that we received a one million five hundred thousand dollar federal allocation through an earmark that our congressional delegation secured for wastewater planning. One point five million dollars, a significant number that was a bit of a long shot application, but prevailed. We never got to that stage, and because we had other smaller funding sources from the state, we never touched that funding. Somewhat surprisingly, if not shockingly, we've engaged in conversations with the grant administrator from the Environmental Protection Agency, and they have indicated to us that there is a high likelihood that they would approve repurposing that one point five million dollars for our town center wastewater project.
That's awesome.
So, it's not a done deal. I, to be clear, we don't have the approval in hand, but we have been strongly encouraged to seek it in the form of a letter that, depending upon your feedback this evening, I would send as soon as tomorrow. What that would mean is, and we have to be careful about the timing. We need to get an answer from them quickly, be certain that that funding is gonna be available to us for the purpose we need it for. That would then free up that one point six million dollars, which absent anything else at this point in time, the finance director and I, I think Phil, would need to go to, you know, into the closeout of the year for the tax rate recap as revenue and become further free cash for a year from now.
You could buy electronic tablets.
Besides that, Mr. Gilberto?
Very good.
Push the button, yes.
That one point six four plus the five hundred, that needs to be contracted out by December thirty-first?
So, that would need to be contracted out, yes, under contract by December-
Under contract. So, the question is, could- Lift the spirits, lift the spirits.
All right, so we didn't get Zoom bombed, and we got audience bombed.
But, could we, is there enough time, I don't think the fire, but is there enough time to ship those to Chestnut Street?
No. No, that was something that came up a year ago, if you recall. We're still in a permitting process for that, and we don't have the certainty that we're gonna be through the permitting and then out to bid with a contract signed by December thirty-first. And we knew that a year ago when we started talking about this. Unfortunately, that's the situation that we're in. I would love to say to you, well, we'll use it for Boroughs Road. We're in a similar situation, and we do have funding in place for Boroughs Road right now to replace those coverage. We're awaiting state permitting for that, for that process. But one thing I will say, though, is, and I know I talked to the finance director about this as well, it could be utilized to fund projects for which we already authorized borrowing at June town meeting or even, I guess, prior to that, to fund those projects and avoid, you know, the need to issue additional borrowing.
Capital?
What's that?
Capital ones?
Capital projects that were authorized for borrowing, yeah. Or, I guess, for cash for that matter as well. I mean, that is an alternative that's also available to you. It's sort of planning reversed by doing that, but that's something that I think we also felt needed to be brought up, because it's significant, and it's not lost on us that the amount, the one point six plus the five hundred plus the six thousand dollars, exceeds the cost of the ladder truck that we're talking about.
So, for example, just, and again, this is my own thing. If we approved, did we approve borrowing for the dump truck? I'm just naming that, because I just feel like we're talking about the dump truck.
I think this week was cell tower. There were a number of items, like the mid-school road, different things.
But those things, we could, even if the construction hasn't started, because it's been a-
As long as we haven't actually borrowed yet on those projects, we can switch the funding, which would open up capacity, so we wouldn't have to necessarily do it, especially for, say, a ladder truck, something like that. My biggest concern is, as much as it seems like we have until December thirtieth to commit this money, I have to do the recap by the first week in November. So, I really, we really need to know the timeline on all of our, clearly everything, quite early, the first week in November. So, we need to know from the state whether they're gonna commit to letting us use the one point five million for this project.
The fifth.
By November first?
Basically.
Okay. Does that look probable?
It does. It does. We're very encouraged by our conversation. I'm skeptical, really, because of how positive it has gone. Again, we're dealing with great folks. It's just surprising when you think about how restricted grant funds tend to be. It's pleasantly surprising, and they've been very helpful with us in this process. You know, this was identified in a conference call last Wednesday or Thursday.
And when will you get confirmation, Mr. Gilberto, of this?
I intend to submit the letter asking for the repurposing tomorrow. And then, you know, they have been very quick to respond to us over the past few business days, so we may know very quickly.
And rather than leave it to chance, and we'll talk more, but if that does happen, maybe, I know there's gonna be a lot on that, but maybe, maybe the discussion and appropriation happens at that second September meeting of the board, or at least-
First or second, yes.
First or second. Just, just to jam you up of last minute, you know, because I know a lot goes into it, Mr. Gom.
I think for us, you know, intent is an important thing. We cannot use that over two million dollars to buy a ladder truck, because it will take too long to design, get under contract, and purchase, but, so I don't want to mislead folks with that. But, we know things are tight. You know, one thing that we did, you know, with this, you know, again, pleasant surprise, want to bring up that you could basically pay off some already authorized borrowing, create borrowing capacity if the board was, you know, inclined to do that. We did have a brief conversation with the financial plan team about it, but we did, there was certainly no conclusion or recommendation of that discussion.
One more time, I'm gonna start this side, just because I'm facing Mr. Massey. Anything on the ARPA in general?
The only question I got is, did you mention that we're in process with the sewer project?
No, we're in a permitting process for that.
No, downtown sewer?
Downtown sewer.
Excuse me, I gotta clarify that. No, that's different.
So, there were two projects. One was the Main Street Concord Street project that there was discussion about betterments. There was discussion about connecting to Andover, going to Greater Lawrence. There is a separate project that's funded through totally separate funding sources and been handled totally separately for connecting the existing municipal buildings in the historic town center to our municipally-owned wastewater treatment plant that you toured the other day.
Yeah, we talked about it the other day.
Sorry, two separate things.
We talked about it, police station, police fire station, library.
The motion that I read said all sewer activities. I'm just confused here. What's going on?
No, you're, you're-
The motion that I read, that was, what meeting was that?
That was the Greater Lawrence Sewer District.
Yeah, the Greater Lawrence.
Greater Lawrence Sewer.
That's the sewer project.
The motion I read, I don't think mentioned anything about Greater Lawrence Sewer-
I think when I read the minutes, it was the Greater Lawrence Sewer District.
Why, can we make sure right now?
It is what I'm saying. That was the hundred thirty-four million dollar project we're no longer going through. This, can you put that up again, please, Mr. Gilberto?
The motion.
This is, it's not, I, but Nick, what I'm trying, Mr. Massey, I'm sorry. What I'm trying to say is that what we voted on was to stop wastewater, wastewater sewer project, which we did. We're not talking about that. This is something that is-
This is a package treatment.
Yeah, the package treatment plant, just to connect the town buildings. This has nothing to do with wastewater sewer.
When we went on the tour the other day through the school buildings, we talked about the wastewater treatment plan and tying in the bachelor school and then police station, fire station, library.
Can you move that over, Mr. Gilberto?
City Center, to the package treatment plant.
I'm just technically trying to figure out exactly what my motion was.
No.
The questions that I asked.
But, Mr. Massey, look, see this? This is what we killed, for lack of a better way. Main Concord Street sewer final design. We're done with that.
I don't think it said anything about Main or Concord Street.
That's what I'm trying to check. Do you remember the meeting that we said it? I do, and what I'm saying is, we voted, I'm trying to clarify that what we voted on was to end wastewater discussion and planning, which we did. This other project, the town center downtown sewer, it is a completely different thing that has nothing to do with the wastewater project, the hundred and thirty-four million or any of that. So, it's two separate things.
The problem is, the school, the school package treatment plan is underutilized, and so that by hooking up the police station, fire station, library batch to it, you actually increase efficiency for that package treatment plan. So, it's actually better utilized to do that. Also, for the potential fire department expansion, it can now go forward, because right now the sewer, the septic tank or wherever it is-
It's a downtown, yes, downtown.
-sits in the front of the fire station. If you eliminate that, they can expand and go forward.
This is not constructing anything, Mr. Massey. This is two separate things.
It's just connecting to what's already existed.
Yeah.
And it's something we've talked about for years, but we couldn't fund it. So, with the ARPA funding, we've decided to use that ARPA money to get that done.
Right.
Good. Thank you.
All right, I think we're good. Mrs. Gonzalez?
I just wanted to say that Christmas music was appropriate for that conversation, because it was like a Christmas gift.
Christmas is coming. Let's get this over with. That was my intent. And I can't help but talk trash. I mean, if we're talking we have some extra money, I'm thinking those toders are gonna be expensive.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
And you know they're coming down the road.
Literally, unfortunately. All set, Mrs. Gonzalez? Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, I just, if it's, if it's, what I'm seeing is, it can also go to free cash. Is that right? So, I would think that we want to maintain that four or five percent that we always talk about are free cash, and if we're gonna be challenged next year for that, that has to be a high priority. That's like an emergency fund for a household. You gotta take care of that first, because otherwise we have other major problems. And then whatever's left after that, you know, we try to repurpose old, if we can re-characterize old debt and reduce it down, I think that makes a lot of sense. First impression, without any more information than that.
Phil O'Leary?
I'm not in favor of using these funds to pay off stuff that we've already borrowed for.
Last fall.
Yeah, good. So, I'm not, I'm not in favor of using these, if we, if we decide to allow it to go to free cash, but if we use it for other purposes, I'm not in favor of rebranding stuff that we've already borrowed for and opening up debt service for moving forward this way. What I would like to do is convert it to free cash, have it available for other projects that we may have to fund next year and the year after, and/or things like the trash bins and things like that, which, to me, originally, I thought the ARPA money should be used for one-time projects that were somewhat without, out of reach- projects that were somewhat without, out of reach for us, that are going to have a legacy effect for things because it was basically found money for us. We've had to adapt a little bit more particularly now with the budget crunch. But I'm not in favor of looking back to use, utilize these funds for something we've already budgeted for and it's in the budget. For having it available for next year or the year after for other projects.
I, I think the deeper discussion is going to be before the deadline, when to use, we don't want to lose out on that ARBA money.
Right, right. Otherwise you lose it. My, my question is, what's the process of it becoming free cash? What has to be done to allow it to flow to free cash instead of losing it? Do we have to do some sort of designation, but take a vote? How's that work?
Well, the grant, the grant becomes free cash, not the ARBA money, correct?
No.
No, the ARBA money.
It's the ARBA money that's at risk.
Because we're using the grant money.
So what process do we have to go through to allow this to flow to free cash? And I know that doesn't take effect until after the fiscal year ends next June 30th.
So I would have to put it on the recap sheet as a miscellaneous note occurring rather than what was the way they explained it to me. So in that essence, I would probably lower my other estimated receipts to, to generate that, that free cash. And then for the federal government, for the federal audit, we have to designate what that ARBA funds, how they would be used. Like the example they gave is that, you know, like the first $2 million of sped costs would be the, the ARBA funds. You know, because you, for the federal government, you have to designate every single thing that you use the ARBA for. So you want to kind of pick a big ticket item so that it's easy when you go through the audit. But I think because you vote, the select board voted to use the money for ARBA, then you, I mean, for such and such a project, then you probably just have to vote not to use it for that project, take a, you know, a formal vote not to use it.
And use it for another specific intended purpose that would fit into the guidelines at your time.
Right. I will get confirmation from DLR and all of that.
And the Feds?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so to me, you know, looking forward, let's find out about this grant money being available, being able to convert. And again, a portion of this may be required to finish off this downtown project. It might be $200,000 as opposed to 1.62.
Absolutely.
But I still want to stay, keep on track with the contract for the downtown project.
Yeah, we're, we're still, I mean, we're not stopping the progress of that, that project. And in fact, there is a match required. So a portion of the ARBA funding needs to be used for catchback or could be used for catchback. With that, I think it was a 20% match.
Okay.
The DBW director identified that that could be used against a small portion of work.
So that was my two sentences that I still want to look forward, I want to make sure that we, we're securing the funds. Even if we have to find another purpose, like the spent expenditures or something like that designated, but also leave us enough wiggle room to complete the project downtown, so I have to keep that on schedule and use the residual for something else.
Yeah, I mean, especially where the overriding go through, we're going to be tight and there might be something we need to find.
I agree.
And again, it is, it is very, very fortunate that the federal money may still be available. And again, I told you I had a meeting with Representative Moulton several months ago, thanking him for the effort he's put in. I know they're working with the administration to, to bring this to fruition, to allow me with Senator Warren and Senator Markey. So we're lucky. It's good.
Wonderful product. Anything else for the ARBA, Mr. Gilberto?
I just, Mr. Massey brought up a question. I just want to re-remorse it. Just said I moved the select board terminate planning activities for a wastewater connection at Greater Lawrence Sanitary District. So if there was a misunderstanding about what that entailed, you know, hopefully this explanation provides some information.
Okay. So, thank you, and we'll continue when we have some of the other numbers the next meeting.
So here you can send your letter off.
Yeah.
So liaison assignments.
Were we supposed to vote? Did you say we were supposed to vote?
We'll not vote for that.
No, I enlisted for, just as an update.
Okay.
There may be votes that need to be taken and that could be as soon as September 9th. But we more just, again, you see, there's a long lead time on the planning, so we need to make sure we're kind of headed in the right direction and we can prepare you for whatever votes you have to take.
So just reviewing liaison assignments as the next agenda item. In my jet lag form, I made one error and it's not Ms. McNeil's mistake, it's mine. Customarily, both the chair and vice chair of the select board are CIPC. I, I kept, you know, to her dismay, it looks like, I kept Mrs. Gonzalez there by mistake, but just caught it tonight. So I'm sorry about that.
I was wondering why my name was...
Sorry. So also I will be adding to the motion, Mr. Massey, when we do the motion for appointments, it's also Mr., to the CIPC, and it's also Mr. O'Leary as well. So I'm sorry about that. I, I didn't do this. We didn't need to do it for you anyways because you already put like, yeah, you're just... And then also just some of the other changes.
I thought you missed me.
Conservation Commission and the Energy Commission has merged. Mr. Wallner will be liaison for that. It's a, those are two together.
Conservation and what?
Energy.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Sustainability.
Yeah.
So 14 and...
Oh yeah, no, we call it the Energy Conservation Committee.
Yeah, so the Energy Conservation Committee is actually absorbed in the Sustainability Committee, which is 38.
Then just some other changes. Just because I have a prior relationship with some of the members there and the heads with the Chamber of Commerce, so I will tackle that. And then Ms. Hartman, Lillian, is the liaison to the MBTA Meramec Valley Transit Authority and Transportation Committee because that's something that, you know, she's spearheaded, so that's pretty obvious. So that's in, and again, I mean, these are subject, I guess, to change based on discussion and, you know, order or if you have time on your hands, but, you know, these are just something right now. Any questions on that? Mr. Gilberto?
Another question, just a clarification first, maybe for Mr. Massey. The, the motions before you, we had capital improvement planning committee broken into two votes. One vote had a list of individuals with terms, I think, through June 30th. Mrs. Gonzalez was a separate vote because her term was to coincide with her elected term, which ends just prior to that. So you can add Mr. O'Leary just to that list of other CIPC members, but we don't need the second motion with the May ending. And then second, that I just, more so that everyone is aware, the appointment of the representative to the MBTA Advisory Board and the Meramec Valley Regional Transit Authority, so that is actually a voting member on that, on that board and it's one of the more unique things we have and that's prescribed to state law. It's, it's not only liaison, it's an appointment of the chair. So we'll have a letter that you assign with the background of Ms. Hartman. And I think we've had the discussion. She's eager to attend to meetings. She's been at meetings. But this will enable her to cast a vote and we'll have a vote cast on our behalf at the meetings. But it's a bit of a, a new state law that puts the appointee authority actually in the chair, so he'll be asked to sign a letter and point itself.
This is for select board votes? What, just confuses us.
Not just, no, not just that. There's a motion there, Mr. Massey, I think it's under, well, there's a bunch. There's one for, you know, this Conservation Committee. This is for the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, number 15, where I mistakenly left off Mr. O'Leary, so we're just adding him.
No, I'm just saying, these are for select board liaison assignments. I, it just confuses to why there's not, why there's a non-select board member on the liaison assignment.
For, oh, for, for Mrs. Hartman for this? You want, sorry, I gave it a...
Previously was a select board who was serving as a select board member who was a liaison and voting member. I think the consensus of the board was to have, in this instance, a staff person serve as a voting member. I think that's right. And she's been the individual who's been closest to our transportation planning efforts. And it is an appointment of the select board, although, excuse me, of the chair, although I think he is informing his colleagues that is his intent.
So also, Mr. Massey, she spearheaded a couple of years ago, two years ago, right? She spearheaded a lot of, for the, you know, the extra rides for seniors and such. So she spearheaded that whole thing and actually also that we needed another ban and things. So we just felt at that time, and I, I still do, that it was appropriate because she knows more about it than anyone else. And it's also pretty time consuming.
Did, did she hear us?
No, great, good question.
Ask if we had anybody attending for that jury?
No. I went when I was useless. Really was. You needed to have continuity. You needed to have continuity to do that. She was the perfect one to do it, so, absolutely.
Just want to repeat, again, anyone who's willing to give up some seats here, I, again, am willing to take on more work. A couple of things off the bat, I thought I was Recreation Committee and Youth Services. I was going to ask for Chamber of Commerce because I'm itching to try and see how I can get revenues down. But I see you got that, that's cool.
Well, but, you know, I don't know if it'd be...
I know, yeah, I know you got...
So with that one, with that one. No, there's one, but, no, 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 it was noted. Also, I, I just did more just because I think when, when discussing to ramp up with Fire Committee, I just didn't want to overburden you, remember? Because I know that happened with me, but definitely hoping for some conversation on something.
Shows a little prepared here.
Noted and will be considered. Fair?
Sir. I'm full of this, I'm full. I said I'm full.
You're full, why?
I said I'm full. I got more to say later on. That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Studos, starting to talk to us like we're the kids, like, do what, go to bed.
No, so, okay, then can we have the motions for appointments, please?
Motion for appointments, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following names are reapportment to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee to expire June 30, 2025. Michael Gilberto, Donald Kelleher, Michael Conley, Lori Ann Galvin, Vincenzo Studo, Joseph Fode, and Stephen O'Leary.
Which one, second name?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. This is a roll call, a name call. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Got to get back to the page. What page did we get?
I'd like to make an amendment. I think the only way to express my opinion, and I think this is pretty obvious to where I'm going, the only way to express my opinion is to make an amendment to the motion. I understand it may fail, but I still stick with my opinion that I believe finance committee members should not, should only be advisory and without voting powers. This will be my position and my amendment request on anything else that has the individual from the finance committee on this.
You have suggestions, you have to roll call vote, do it individually, so you just vote for whoever you want.
You don't have to vote for Mr. Kelleher.
You don't have to vote for him. Yeah, you don't have to say that.
So it's not, that's why it's rolled all night. No, no, that's why it's rolled all night, AM.
If you want to make a amendment to strike that, you need to say, if that, if you don't vote for everybody, you just check.
So these are all voting members?
These are all voting members.
See, I can see those that have not voted.
And this is an advisory committee to the board. It's not, it's a little...
Yeah, we can, we disagree. We disagree.
So how should I, uh... Would you like to...
Depends which one. If you want to make a motion to strike a name, you can do that. It can require a second.
Then you can make a motion to strike.
Or you can just say the name.
The motion that was made, it just both of those individuals.
A little support.
If you express your opinion as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to remove Donald Kelleher from the list of appointees to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Go ahead, a second.
I understand.
Motion fails. Back to the original motion. Any further discussion?
I was going to say, we learned that from the town council that people...
No, I think, I think we're out of amendment, we're out of amendment, pertinent to the article, please.
We are talking about...
No, he can, let him, because you'll, go ahead, Mr. Wallner.
Talking about their grounds. Their grounds, Mr. Chairman.
Did you talk about the same motion?
Their grounds.
The motion for them failed due to the lack of...
So now we're back to the...
So now they're back to the main motion.
And you asked for discussion.
If there's further discussion.
On the main motion.
On the main motion.
On the main motion. So just to be clear, that you can have these people, including John Kelleher, on this committee because it's an advisory committee.
This is not pertinent.
Hold on, timeout. Mr. Massey, to be fair, you brought up that you disagreed with that opinion. He's just saying he agrees with it. You guys are saying the same thing, just disagreeing about it.
The team then failed.
May, may. I'm talking about the main motion.
He's talking about the main motion.
Because this has come up as a, as a question. So again, we learned from town council at town meeting that as an advisory board, you can definitely have finance people on advisory committees and it is not a violation of any rule that's out there that we have in our apply laws. Just want to make that clear. Thank you.
And the town council can make their opinion. That Mr. Wallner would come back to our board to make that decision. So that's outside of town council opinion, that, that's more I'm getting at and I can see the eyes. I get it. I'm stopping.
It's, it's, I trust, I hate to say it, but I trust town council more than I trust you.
I don't know if you heard this one.
Okay, I'm good.
Any further discussion? It's a roll call, by name call, excuse me. Mr. O'Leary?
Michael Gilberto, Donald Kelleher, Michael Conley, Lori Ann Galvin, Vincenzo Studo, Joseph Fode, Stephen O'Leary.
Mr. Wallner?
Michael Gilberto, Don Kelleher, Michael Conley, Lori Ann Galvin, Vincenzo Studo, Joseph Fode, and Stephen O'Leary.
Mr. Massey?
Michael Gilberto, Michael Conley, Lori Ann Galvin, Vincenzo Studo, Joseph Fode, and Stephen O'Leary.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Michael Gilberto, Donald Kelleher, Michael Conley, Lori Ann Galvin, Vincenzo Studo, Joseph Fode, and Stephen O'Leary.
And the chair is Michael Gilberto, Donald Kelleher, Michael Conley, Lori Ann Galvin, Joseph Fode, and Stephen O'Leary.
I can say myself and me, Vincenzo Studo. Question carries. And we're going to skip over that one for Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Massey for the Conservation Commission, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following name for appointment to the Conservation Commission for an associate term to expire December 31, 2027, Alyssa Bailey.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Further discussion by the liaison?
That's me. And recommend the appointment, consultation with the chair of the commission, take conversations and enthusiastically looking forward to her serving. So recommend Alyssa Bailey.
Anyone else have questions, please? Okay. Name call, please. Mr. O'Leary?
Alyssa Bailey.
Mr. Wallner?
Alyssa Bailey.
Mr. Massey?
Alyssa Bailey.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Alyssa Bailey.
And the chair is Alyssa Bailey. Next one is Economic Development Committee, please, Mr. Massey.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following name for appointment to the Economic Development Committee as a full member for a term to expire on May 6, 2025, Leanne Gonzalez.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. I will, I'll give an opinion on that one. So Mrs. Gonzalez has been in the EDC as her, as an advisory, excuse me, an alternate member or a voting member. So, Mr. Massey, I have to like, it's like, there's a voting member and then there's another select board member who's like an alternate for whatever reason, just at least sit in meetings to give us the information. And it's something that, you know, she's been involved with, so I just don't, you know, don't fix what's not broken. And she's done a great job there, so any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just by way of indication for board members, this committee is a jointly appointed committee by the planning commission that can be select board except for the boards designated as representatives for the planning commission. That's why this vote is being taken just amongst this board. The planning commission has a vote to the same for their representative. Then there are, I think, alternate or associate members who... For the need to be jointly appointed.
It's a name call, Mr. O'Leary?
Leanne Gonzalez.
Mr. Wallner?
Leanne Gonzalez.
Mr. Massey? Mr. Massey?
Leanne Gonzalez.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Leanne Gonzalez.
The chair is Leanne Gonzalez. Facilities Master Plan Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for reappointment to the Facilities Master Plan Committee for terms to expire May 31, 2025. Todd Wokel, on behalf of Department of Public Works, Don Kelleher, on behalf of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, Jennifer Leanders, on behalf of School Committee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to remove Donald Kelleher, who was a Finance Committee member, from the list of Facilities Master Plan Committee appointments.
Do I have a second? Motion fails, back to the original, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary, there's a name called, named roll, sorry.
Todd Wokel, on behalf of the Department of Public Works, Donald Kelleher, on behalf of the Capital School of Planning Committee, Jennifer Leanders, on behalf of the School Committee.
Mr. Walner?
Todd Wokel, Don Kelleher, and Jennifer Leanders.
Mr. Massey?
Todd Wokel and Jennifer Leanders.
Mrs. Gonzalez? Question.
Todd Wokel, Don Kelleher, and Jennifer Leanders.
And the chair is Todd Wokel, Donald Kelleher, Jennifer Leanders. Fire Station Building Committee, Mr. Massey?
Yes. Now, before jumping in, I just want to start off the packet that we received from the Superintendent of Schools, they did not vote anyone to the Fire Station Building Committee, so I'd like to, to that point, well, you know, before, before I even really looked deep into the packet, I was gonna ask, really, what the purpose of having a school committee member on the Fire Station Building Committee, and what that truly represents, but then I found that she wasn't appointed by the school committee.
She was chosen by them to get her out, and wanted her to be, so we have to vote her in, Jennifer Leanders?
Mr. Chairman.
The packet that we have, like, that's a...
No, Mr. Massey's absolutely correct, her appointment, along with Mr. Wokels, Mr. Kellehers, and Mr. Kellehers are by virtue of their membership of the Facilities Master Plan Committee, so all of the members of that committee are members of the Fire Station Building Committee, plus, I believe it's two firefighters, the fire chief, and the director of public works, so her appointment is ex officio as a member of, as a member of the Facilities Master Plan Committee, Facilities Master Plan Committee does not require action by the school committee, so that's why, it's a great question.
The, I think someone brought that up, actually, at town meeting, about school committee and their involvement in a lot of articles, and why they're recommending articles that really have nothing to do with schools, I, I truly believe in that, I, I want to get the board's thoughts as to why school committee members are part of the Fire Station Building Committee, or, or what value they can bring as a voting member.
Because we're talking about it, I'll give my opinion and start, the, here's, I think here's the simplest thing, because if we have to...
Again, I love Jennifer Leanders, I just want to say, I think she's...
No, no, because if we, if we have to build a new school, it'll be sure everybody in this room's gonna wanna talk about it, so, somebody could make an argument and say, well, we're building a...
It's our tax dollars.
Yes, but you could, you could say the other way around, too, so, I'm just trying to think that, also, I wasn't here when this happened, but, let's go, just to stick to what Mr. Gilberto said, and then somebody else can give a comment, who's been here a lo, everyone's been here longer than me, that it's just because of the general makeup, right, Mr. Gilberto, of the Masters Facilities Plan Committee, I just said that wrong, Facilities Master Plan Committee?
The entire membership of the Facilities Master Plan Committee are members of the Fire Station Building Committee by virtue of the charge the board approved, I believe, last August or September.
So, I don't think it's gonna answer your question of why, right?
Do you have that specific, sorry, Mr. Chairman, that specific charge?
I could find it, it'll take me a moment.
However, here's what I will say about that, I, I've said it, and we're gonna do it, we just couldn't, now, there's just too many agenda, I want to have a general conversation about the makeup of it, so I think that would be a great discussion at that point, if that, if that's okay, because I wanted to have, in general, a conversation about the Fire Station Building Committee, just, just, you know, because I, it's been a year, we have new board membership, so I think that's a question for that point, if that's okay.
So, Mr. Gilberto, we can just have that charge there, when we have that discussion? Thank you.
Any further discussion before we vote on this?
I hope, I guess, I hope as we do this, because we're talking about, the contention has been on the Facility Master Plan Committee and the Fire Station Building Committee, the majority board has nominated Don Kelleher in both cases, and have approved it, and I hope that our liaison is gonna be supportive of that person, even if they disapprove, because that is the will of the board, and they are here to represent the majority.
I'm confident, I'm confident he will, I am confident.
Thank you.
But I think, if I could just add, I think that you will find that, even though in principle, I understand principle of what you're feeling and saying about this, but Don Kelleher has a lot to offer, he's...
I think so, too.
Yeah, so, okay.
I think he has a lot to offer.
Yeah.
So, can I have a motion for the Fire Station Building Committee, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment to the Fire Station Building Committee to expire May 31, 2025. Todd Wokel, Don Kelleher, Jen Leanders, Michael Gilberto, and Joe Parisi.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any, kind of pre discussion, but any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to remove Don Kelleher from the appointment list of Fire Station Building Committee, as he is a Finance Committee member.
And do we have a second? Motion fails, back to the original motion, any further discussion? Seeing none, this is, name call, Mr. O'Leary?
Todd Wokel, Donald Kelleher, Jennifer Leanders, Michael Gilberto, Joseph Parisi.
Mr. Walner?
Todd Wokel, Don Kelleher, Jennifer Leanders, Michael Gilberto, and Joe Parisi.
Mr. Massey?
Todd Wokel, Jennifer Leanders, Michael Gilberto, Joe Parisi.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Todd Wokel, Don Kelleher, Jennifer Leanders, Michael Gilberto, Joseph Parisi.
Moving on, Sustainability Committee, which we just renamed, I think?
Sustainability Committee is, did you vote by the name?
Oh, the chair is high, sorry.
You gotta say things.
This one's right.
Oh, yeah.
This one's right.
Wow. Todd Wokel, Donald Kelleher, Jennifer Leanders, Michael Gilberto, Joseph Parisi.
Oh, sorry. Didn't I, didn't I vote?
I thought you did.
I thought I did, you were making me...
Anyway, it's, it's... You did that.
I'm sorry.
Now I gotta watch the tape. Okay. Next motion, please, Mr. Massey.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for appointment to a Sustainability, to the Sustainability Committee as a full member for an indefinite term, Gregory Racine.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, recommendation?
Actually, John Rogers is on, so, John, if you can take yourself up, he's the chair.
Hold on, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to monkey with this for a second.
If he's available, I know he wanted to...
There we go. Express his own support.
Yeah, I'm here, thank you, yes, very supportive, Gregory Racine is a new resident of North Reading, and is leaving Brian, certainly want to support that, he also works in a field that is related to, his, his work is involved with clean technology, and I'm really, really supportive of having him on the committee, so appreciate your vote, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, any further discussion?
Let's keep him on, because he'll be on the next one, too.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
We have a second for this, yeah.
We got a second, is there a discussion? Who was this, I think?
People.
So, further discussion?
Yes, I'd like, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to remove indefinite term, and just to, to briefly discuss this, and I already yelled out the whole idea with the motions and motion unveiling, but I'd like to discuss this with my colleagues, I really think that indefinite term is a bad one, that wasn't the way democracy or government was set up ever to be, I think indefinite term can be maybe pushed to, now, I know we have three-year terms, some are three-year terms here in town, there's some one-year terms, I'm willing to make the Sustainability Committee, I just propose this four-year terms, max, and this way, when their appointment is up, they can decide, hey, I only gone to one meeting in the last four years, maybe I should pass it on to someone else, but if they forget their involvement, or, there's, there's several reasons, sustainability changes over time, people move, I, I don't think the indefinite terms are good for government.
Mr. Gilberto, I don't think that's something we would change on this motion, right, because we'd have to have a discussion about the actual committee.
No, this, this is a committee that was established by voters elect, well, it's actually been revised three times, most recently a few months ago, right, Mr. Walner? You certainly could have a discussion about the terms, I will say, it is unique amongst nearly every appointment that we have, I don't know the history as to why it was indefinite when it was set up, it could have defaulted to that, there certainly hasn't been any problem with the performance of the committee, or any of the members on it, so I don't want, you know, to, in any way that to be perceived as, you know, the reason for my comment, but it is unique to have an indefinite term, for sure, but I don't think it would be in this vote that you would be able to adjust it, because you're making the appointment consistent with a previous vote to establish a committee with a term that was indefinite, whether intended to be indefinite or not.
In my thoughts of that, I think I mentioned this at the last couple of people who got into the Sustainability Committee, and that's fine, and I think, you know, I'm just looking for a move forward type of thing, and, and those that are in the Sustainability at this point, unfortunately, sorry, Gregory Racine, it, it isn't nothing to him, or it's the process, but...
Can we put this over, and, and discuss?
Mr. O'Leary?
I would suggest, and again, I understand the indefinite term, I think this kind of came about because the old recycling committee, we had a hard time recruiting people, and we had constant turnover, or we just had two or three members that were active, and that was it, so what happened was, as we finally got to fill up the recycling committee, we said, all right, let's hold out on these people, do it on indefinite term at this particular point in time, and see how it goes, then we changed to sustainability, lot more interest, because of the broader interest to look at, so, what I would suggest is, you know, make the appointment here, and then ask the committee themselves to propose to us a set of staggered terms, so that there's, you know, one, two, and three-year terms, to stagger it, and come to us with a recommendation of the staggered terms, and then we can make the reappointments that way, and then there'll be a constant refurbishing and turnover, accountability of people aren't participating to that point, but I think we need to be consistent now with what we're doing, and then ask them to come up with a, a game plan as far as staggering the terms, because we're certainly pleased that the amount of interest has grown substantially, and we're expecting good things out of this, this committee, and very excited about it, so...
Well, I can get, I can get behind that.
I have, there are some alternates on this committee that...
You mean associate members?
Associate members, sorry, that if those an indefinite term, they'll never get a shot.
Unless, no, some, some people come, you know, they move out of town, or they decide that they can't participate, and then they resign, and a slot opens up, so, and then generally, the liaison would have a constant discussion, at least annually, with the chairman as to performance levels and people's attendance, and have a discussion with people about their ability to continue to sustain themselves in the committee, you know, so those discussions take place annually, generally, there'd be turnover, but it's not a bad idea, just ask Mr. Rogers to approach the subject when they meet next, to think about staggered terms, to allow, with not just continuity, but turnover as it happens, and as people's lives change, and their ability to continue to serve changes.
I, I agree with that, I think that's a good idea. I'm sure John, John Rogers is...
I just wanted to say that if he hadn't brought that up, I was written it out, because I was happy to have it, so I'm glad he did bring it up.
But we should go forward on Gregory.
Yeah, let's make the appointments, and again, ask them to come up, but they have a discussion amongst themselves as to what people's availability is, and work out the staggered terms, yeah.
Makes sense, any further? This is a name vote, again, Mr. O'Leary?
Gregory Racine.
Oh, did you want to hear from him?
He, we just...
No, we, we heard from him.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, we had to get that...
So, I'm...
Mr. Walner?
Gregory Racine, sorry, sorry, it's Tom, going ahead.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Gregory Racine.
And the chair is Gregory Racine. Mr. Rogers, would you like to give an opinion on Mrs. Osborne, next, after Mr. Massey reads the motion, please do. Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for appointment to Sustainability Committee as an associate member for an indefinite term, Jean Osborne.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to remove indefinite term from the appointment list.
Do I have a second? Motion does not carry. Mr. Rogers, would you like to give a recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jean Osborne is a long-term resident of North Reading, she has also been very active in the committee, even in an official capacity, because she does not, she has not asked us to be, to join the board, now she will become, she has asked, or been willing to become an associate member, and I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Massey, she is our inaugural associate member, this is a position that was created two or three years ago, we hadn't used the three slots we have, and I'm really excited to have her on the committee in an official capacity, because she's, she's been great. Thank you.
And John, as far as the suggestion of speaking to your committee members, and suggesting a set of staggered terms, could you work that out?
I am totally willing to bring it up with them, and then talk about it with Mr. Walner. I would admit, when I signed up for the committee twenty years ago, I, I'm not sure I realized it was an indefinite term, and I hadn't figured out how to get off, so...
You're helping him.
That, that, that makes a lot of sense.
It's a low standard.
That's funny.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, we're seeing some of the evidence of their work, it just, I don't know if you noticed, but in the transcript now, they're doing the Sustainability Corner, and I think every week they're gonna try to put out some information of education, which is one of the key things to recycling, is people, just, it's hard to keep up with all the rules of how to recycle, and they're doing a good job, so...
Thank you.
But John, we don't want to see you go, so you hang right in there.
I don't want to see you go, yeah.
I don't think that's what...
No, Mr. Walner, thank you for bringing that, because I meant to put that on my list of, you know, the new business, to congratulate them for taking the initiative, and it's gonna be great, thank you.
Doing a good job.
Thank you. Thank you on behalf of the committee.
So this is a name vote.
They're great, they're great.
Mr. O'Leary?
Jean Osborne.
Mr. Walner?
Jean Osborne.
Mr. Massey?
Jean Osborne.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Jean Osborne.
And the chair is Jean Osborne.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the December 4, 2023 meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I understand. Before, excellent. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the April 1, 2024 meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I understand.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the April 22, 2024 meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I understand, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the May 8, 2024 meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Massey, you're back in the game, May. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for May 2024 meeting, excuse me, for the May 2024 meeting as amended.
Motion by Mr. Massey?
Excuse me, it's, it's as written, the amendments during the review process, what's been submitted, is all the things with, after the review, so these are the minutes as written. We didn't, we didn't vote to amend anything.
These are the, what your edits?
So this is with everybody's edits and all the input, so it's as written.
Okay, so, and how do I put, no, I won't, how do I put my edits?
They're in.
They're in.
Oh.
They're in.
Yeah, okay.
When you were doing your review, you put the suggestions in, she, she, she did the review, with the review, she incorporated those changes, and now this is what we're voting on, as written. So unless we're making a motion to amend, there's no, not as amended, because these are as written.
Do you have anything else to amend or motion?
No, I just don't know how, just tell me what the process, that's what I'm trying to understand, right? So, mutiny, mutiny, sometimes I say-
No, 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 so, so, as our secretary forwards these for our review, individual review here, take a look at these before we submit them, and we give her feedback. She incorporates those, the feedback and the changes, and that's what we're, that's what we're voting on.
We don't vote on the packet that I got, the packet that I got, let's just say I didn't disagree, all right? So then, this, this motion was made off that packet. So, I don't, you know, just think too much into it.
Yeah, your edits are in, as written.
They've already been adopted.
They've already been adopted.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, anything you sent to Miss McNeil is included on what we're voting on.
And again, your suggested changes were forwarded to us, like, if I suggested some changes, and send forwarded to all of us to review again, and if there's a disagreement, then we'd have a chat about it here, and then either be amended or not amended or just-
I'm just curious, how do you know what I put in?
I sent it.
She sent out, she sent out a revised copy. She sent out a revised copy.
I don't think I know any mail.
Did that make any purpose?
This is probably, no, it wasn't, and like I said, we're having the issues with the computers and the emails. I have to address that in the morning, because now I'm just finding out, here's another one that you should have received in this contact list that you didn't.
Okay, yes, yeah, that's, okay.
But there's the process.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
I think, can I change that?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, motion is as written.
As written.
Yeah, please.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the regular session minutes for the May 20, 24 meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for May 31, 2024 meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Give me just a rapid follow-up whenever you're ready, Mr. Massey.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the June 10, 2024 meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Yes. The MBTA, those three articles, did you vote? No. Didn't you vote? No. With Mr. O'Leary?
No.
You're talking about?
No, I was, no, I was the sole.
You were the sole?
I was the sole.
Okay, I thought I, I thought neither of the fire station, but, okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the June 11, 2024 meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the June 17, 2024 meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, the stop, sorry. Any further discussion? Sorry, it's, that was my fault. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain, I was not present.
Abstain.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the June 27, 24 meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the July 10, 2024 meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. All, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. See?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the July 16, 2024 meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the July 24, 2024 meeting as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to pass over these minutes, please.
Okay. If there's more edits, that's fine. Is that okay?
I'll withdraw my second, you withdraw your motion.
Withdraw the motion.
Yeah, I'll withdraw the second.
I don't, I don't.
I withdraw my motion.
And you withdraw your second?
I do.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, actually, now that I know, I'm going to request a pass these over, August 2.
August 2?
August 2.
Okay. All right. TH's reporter.
Pleased to inform you that the town's been awarded approximately $55,000 from the municipal local cybersecurity grant program offered by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Securities, Office of Grants and Research. Thank you to Senator Tarr, Representative Jones, for their assistance. I'm also pleased to inform you that the town has been formally notified of award of its year nine allocation of the federal youth substance abuse grant funding.
Oh, nice.
Year nine. We have one more year left funded, and then we're on the hook. So we're, you know, looking toward that as a, you know, something we're going to try to preserve and intend to preserve, whether we're using tax funding, whether we're using settlement, opioid settlement funding, but, you know, we're committed to finding a long-term funding source for that.
This is for Mrs. Luckowitz?
Yes, for the youth substance grant program coordinator. We talked earlier about the successful national night out. I was unfortunately unable to attend, but I'm told the crowd was one of the largest that we've seen. I would like to thank Walmart for providing $250 in miscellaneous supplies, the Reading North Reading Rotary for providing a bounce house, and Reading Cooperative Bank for providing all the water. Thank you also to Chief Zimmerman, Youth Substance Abuse Coalition Coordinator Amy Luckowitz, mental health clinician Laura Miranda, and the many folks who offered their time for this important community event. And finally, we continue to advocate to the state for timely approval of the town's request for permitting to replace the four culverts on Boroughs Road. We've had some good conversations with our engineers, some conversations with Representative Jones as well, and we're really pushing to get approval to do what would be a short to medium-term solution of replacing those culverts to preserve the integrity of the road and not find ourselves in a situation where we have to deal with an emergency closure like we did at Chestnut Street. We continue to also hear feedback that the state is going to be looking towards a longer-term solution for both this location and downstream for a larger structure. And we're certainly open to being part of that conversation down the road, but we want the culvert replaced, and we want it stabilized. And we're getting good feedback from the state. We're now in a phase where we need to provide some additional geotechnical information that our engineers are gathering and will submit. But I have talked to Representative Jones's office, and they are in touch with the Mass Department of Transportation to make sure that once that information is in, we're in the queue for a quick approval. Keep in mind, we do have funding in place already that was approved last October for replacement of those culverts. I know folks are looking for the sort of permanent solution to be put in place. I think the challenge is that we're going to be waiting for other structures downstream that are not in our control in other communities to go through a permitting process, and I just don't think it makes sense for us to wait. I think we need to do something as soon as we can, continue to advocate for that solution of replacing the culverts in kind with the, with either new culverts or relining them, so that we have a stable solution while the conversations continue for however many, you know, months, years, or beyond for a longer-term solution. But we continue to advocate for that. I just can't stress that enough for folks to understand. We're not sitting back idly. We're working very hard to try to get this permanent so we can proceed. We wanted to do the work this past summer, the timing didn't work out in that way, but we remain committed to finding a reasonable schedule to get this done as soon as we're permanent, and I'll continue to keep the board and the community apprised as we push forward on that project. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Do I have one last motion? Mr. Chair, move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.